Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wachem County Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order for June 13th, 2017. Please call the roll.
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Rudd Brown.
Here.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Ken Mann.
Here.
Sat Paul Sidhu.
Here.
Carl Weimer.
Here.
And Councilmember Donovan is excused tonight. Please rise and join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you have your cellphone with you tonight, please either turn it off or place it on vibrate. And if you'll be handing out any paperwork tonight for council members, make sure our staff gets a copy for their records. I have one announcement. It's a vacancy on the Wachem County Planning Commission. It's a partial term, ending January 31st, 2019. You must be a resident of Wachem County Nu District 3, or what we call the foothills. And information and applications are available online, or you can contact the council office. We will move into our public hearings. Audience members who have signed up at the back of the room prior to the beginning of our meeting will be called first, be asked to form a line behind the signs on either side. If you were unable to sign up before the hearing, don't worry, you'll still be able to testify. Each speaker needs to state their name clearly, and there's signs on the podiums to get close to the microphone, because people in the back have trouble hearing. Council staff will keep track of your time. You have three minutes for your testimony. When it gets down to when you have 30 seconds left, they will give you a warning, and then they will tell you when your three minutes is up. So our first public hearing is a resolution approving the sale of a conservation easement. And we have no one signed up for that. Council, it's the red, there is a red additional information copy with a map in it. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on the sale of conservation easements? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and take it back to council.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0 with Councilmember Donovan excused. Next up is an ordinance to establish speed limits on certain county roads. Do we have any kind of a staff report for that?
Good evening. Joe Rutan with Public Works. And I'm going to direct your attention to page 208 of your packet.
208?
208 of your packet, which is a map.
Right.
And what we are proposing, based on a petition from the neighbors, is lowering the speed limit on Marine Drive between Bancroft and Hoff, which is now 40 miles an hour, we'd be lowering that to 30 miles an hour. Public Works agrees with this request. What we would also, would also tell you is, if you do change this to 30 miles an hour, we will monitor the situation, continue to work with the neighbors, and potentially be back in front of you to look at lowering Hoff and Jones, which are currently 35 to 30, so that there's more consistency within the area.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Joe before?
I guess not.
We will open the public hearing. We have one person signed up, and that's David Stritch.
Hi there. Do you want me to spell my name for these folks, or is it okay on there?
We have it on the sign sheet, so.
Awesome, thank you. So I just wanted to say to all of you, thank you so much for considering this change of speed limit. It's really going to be wonderful to have a safer and quieter place, and to help build our community, and to build friendly neighbors, and to be talking and walking on the road. So thank you so much for considering this.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to us about speed limits? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And what's the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion, Ms. Brenner?
Just a real quick one. Thank you, Joe. This was sort of a long time coming, but you did it really expeditiously, so I appreciate it. And I think it's going to be much safer.
Seeing no more discussion, please call the roll.
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
Rudd Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Todd Donovan. Sorry, Ken Mann.
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidhu.
Yes.
Carl Weimer.
Yes.
That passes unanimously 6-0 with Councilmember Donovan excused. Our next public hearing is an ordinance regarding establishment of a speed limit on a portion of Slater Road. Mr. Rutan.
Once again, Joe Rutan with Public Works. This is on Slater Road as you head westbound, right before you get to the water, there is a 90-degree turn. It's 40 miles an hour until you get through the curve, and then it's 25. We'd like to have it be 25 miles as you go into the curve. And that's what this is doing.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. There's no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak to us about a speed limit on Slater Road? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Rudd Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Ken Mann.
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidhu.
Yes.
Carl Weimer.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
That passes 6-0 with Mr. Donovan excused. Okay, now for the main event. This is a public hearing to gather public comment on the sizing of a proposed new Wachem County jail, per Resolution 2017-034, approved May 30th, 2017. Does, is there any, I guess there is no staff report on this. So we will open the public hearing. First up is Joy Gilfillan, then Deana Jensen, and then Sandy Robson.
Joy Gilfillan, Wachem County resident. Taxpayers say no to mismanagement. No new tax, no new jail. In this public hearing, there is no way to determine the size of the jail. It's premature to ask the public to tell you, the council, for it is impossible to even hold a logical conversation about it. There is no needs assessment. A needs assessment cannot be built without certain critical facts being present, facts that a good business manager should provide easily, yet facts that have not been provided by the executive branch, not provided by the executive, the sheriff, the prosecutor, or the jail chief in a form that we can use. Critical facts are missing that form the very basis of discussion about the size, scope, or scale of any new jail. Who exactly is in the jail? Why are they there? How long do they stay? Are they convicted, just arrested, in on a misdemeanor, or charged with felony? Are they pending trial and dangerous, or could they leave if they could pay bail? This is need-to-know information, and the task forces don't even have this information. Without it, the basis of this whole discussion is a moot point and does not belong in the public domain. No valid needs assessment means the facts about who is in jail right now, it's critical information. It's a building block to be able to build a needs assessment. The one that was given in 2013 was mostly about population trends. That's not enough to build a needs assessment. It was simply a glorified report that was submitted at the same time that you were convinced to buy, some of you were convinced to buy the land. It's inadequate. Missing current data. Today, even that report from 2013 is four years out of date, and critical new data is missing on the effectiveness of work done by the Incarceration Prevention Task Force. Thank you very much, council, for putting these people in place. They have done an extraordinary job. The very institute is here to give a report on July 10th, with the beginnings of an actual valid needs assessment, potentially. The city of Bellingham has done extraordinary work, the Lemmy Nation has done work, the Nuksek Indian Tribe has done work. None of that information has been presented appropriately to any of us taxpayers, or to the councils that are actually capable of turning back the incarceration rate. Inhumane and illegal jail conditions. Who's in charge of our jail, really? Who's in charge of the conditions that we're in? We have known for many years now, at least two that I'm aware of, where we know that that jail is inhumane, illegal, and out of constitutional respectability. But we have not fixed the jail.
30 seconds, please.
We have, we have time. We need to fix the current jail so that it's humane, and you have to do it whether or not you pass the tax. You still have to fix it. So we have staff at this jail who've been in charge for decades. No other building in this county is likely in this kind of condition. Where are the reports that prove that the jail cannot be fixed? I haven't been able to find them, and upon request, we were not delivered that information. All of this is de facto proof of mismanagement. It's irresponsible to ask taxpayers to pay more for failures. Where does the buck really stop?
Please, I ask you to respect all speakers tonight, and refrain from applause, or booing, or any type of reaction. I understand it's an emotional issue, but we need to make everybody feel safe about making their own testimony. So Deana, go ahead.
Deana Jensen, Birch Bay. I want to acknowledge that this meeting is being held on land that is the traditional territory of the Lemmy and Nuksek peoples. May we nurture our relationship with our co-sailish neighbors, and the shared responsibilities to their homelands, where we all reside today. My recommendation for the size of the jail facility is to keep it at its current size, and here's why. While the Wachem County administrations, city governments, and tribal governments have gone to great lengths over a long period of time to research and negotiate terms for a new jail, that is not the only long, strenuous, ongoing efforts that have been made in the interest of addressing our currently unsafe and inhumane Wachem County jail. Organizations, community groups, county committees, and individual citizens have researched and made recommendations for years about how to address our unsafe and inhumane jail. Even if a proposal for funding a new jail goes on the ballot, it will still be a long time till a new jail would be completed, during which time, we will still have an unsafe and inhumane jail. We need to fix our jail now. The building assessment and cost estimate on the jail and work center that was done in October 2016 identified many problems that should be addressed to allow the ongoing operation of the jail and work center for the next five to 10 years. We are seriously remiss in addressing the unsafe and inhumane conditions at the jail. I believe it is imperative to remedy this now. Then or concurrently, we need to invest in the triage center, more beds for addiction and mental health patients, and invest in incarceration prevention and reduction measures. I believe that Councilmember Sidhu, for one, has offered suggestions on coming up with needed funds that could be used for such investments, which do not involve a new sales tax. If this means that a new council faces the question of whether a new location for the jail needs to be selected in another five to 10 years, we will have a whole lot better idea at that time of whether efforts to reduce our jail population have been effective, and we will have the benefit of more data and government and community effort during that decade, on which to base a decision on changing the size of our jail. As is often the case with prudent planning and careful financial decisions, this can end up saving us money. And in the meantime, we will have addressed the unsafe and inhumane conditions in our jail, which we should have done a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy, then Amy Glasser, and Lisa Farino.
Hi, Sandy Robson, Birch Bay. I do not think it's in our county's best interest to build a new and bigger jail at this time. I don't see any reason to pass an ordinance to place on our county's November election ballot, a proposition seeking to fund a new, bigger jail by using a sales tax that will continue for decades. It's felt like the new jail issue has been being rammed down our throats for the last several years, and I think it's best to step back from the pressure that's been being continuously applied on this issue, and address what needs to be fixed right now, in terms of our existing jail facility. Then, maybe several years from now, start from scratch with an entirely new process in planning to build a new jail, to be built in approximately 10 years or so, since that's when the estimate we're told is how long our existing jail could continue to serve our county's needs, if we would fully address what needs to be corrected and fixed now. We will have a much better idea at that time if efforts to reduce our jail population are working, and we will have the benefit of more data and government and community effort during that period, on which to base a decision about changing the size or location of our jail. Along with the county's work on the jail issue, cities, government committees, tribes, community organizations, and individuals have put years of work into research, action, and recommendations. But I feel as though our county executive and sheriff have not been giving real consideration of the information that resulted from all of that work on the jail issue, and I feel we're being rushed with the impending election ballot deadline. It's as if Executive Lowes and Sheriff Elfo have essentially put a gun to our collective heads, telling us that we need to build a new jail, and a big jail at that, and the ammunition used in that weapon, is the rushed timing of having to make this decision before the deadline to get the proposition on the November election ballot. If a new jail sales tax proposition were to be placed on the election ballot, that continued process would take us five months, up through that election. And if that proposition were to be approved by voters, then the construction of a new jail is going to take a long time beyond that. And until that new, bigger jail construction would be finished, we would still have a jail in which there are unsafe and inhumane conditions. The sheriff and our county administration have pinned their attention on a new jail over the last several years, rather than immediately attending to what needs to be fixed. Let's fix our jail now, and also invest in the triage center, more beds for those with addiction and mental health issues, and invest in incarceration prevention and reduction measures. I urge you to pursue ways to come up with needed funds for such investments, which do not involve a new sales tax, such as those suggested by Councilmember Sidhu. Decision-makers and voters need to have all possible information on the new jail project, and at this time. It is clear that those decision-makers and the voters do not have all the needed information. Please do not approve an ordinance that would place a sales tax proposition on our county's November election ballot. And I thank you for all the time and effort you guys, you all, have been putting in on this. I know it's extraordinary. Thank you.
Amy, and then Lisa, and then Peter Holcomb.
Amy Glasser, Bellingham, Washington. I think I'll reiterate just very briefly what everybody has said so far. We have no idea how many beds you need. You have no idea how many beds need to be for mental health and substance abuse. All of those studies are in reports that you haven't gotten yet. It doesn't seem to make sense to be pushing a tax before you know what you want. It really just doesn't. What we do know is we've got a huge piece of property up in Ferndale that costs way more than we ever should have spent, and we were rushed into doing it because of worries of finances, and it was going to get too expensive. Well, that amount of money was ridiculous. The acreage is ridiculously priced, and the mitigation that's going to be required for it is in the hundred, it's in the 10, 10 million or so, a huge amount of money. Why are we not selling that land, using that money to fix our current jail, putting more people from our current jail into Division Street, because we definitely do not have 200 people in our jail right here that are dangerous and that high risk? A bunch of people could get there. We can get a lot of people released if we just spend the money on more drug court, and mental health court, and family court. We can get a lot of people out by putting people on electronic home monitoring. We can spend less money on electronic home monitoring than the county does, which spends about $46 a day, when Lemmy Nation spends $7.50 a day. We can save money in a million different ways, and we can do it by actually making housing and services the priority out of our law and order budget, rather than using it to incarcerate people where it doesn't help, it just puts people right back on the streets, and they end up in this horrible catch-22 of not being able to find work because they were in jail, not being able to find apartments because they were in jail, and we're perpetuating this horrible cycle. And it has to stop, and we're in an amazing position to stop it, because we do need to fix our current jail, make Division Street work, and if we have to build anything, do it across the street, either way, knock this building down, and make a parking garage of which our county and city needs also. Thank you very much.
Lisa? And then Peter, and then Dean, it's either Tuckerman or Tolkerman.
Hi, my name is Lisa Farino, and I'm a resident of Bellingham since last summer. And I wanted to share with you a personal story about why I don't support expanding the jail. During my first year of college, I broke up with a high school boyfriend, who then became suicidal, dropped out of college, moved back into the area where we both grew up, and then he started showing up at my parents' house, harassing and scaring my mom, and she had a hard time getting him to leave. I came back from college, and he continued to try to see me, and eventually showed up at my parents' house again. He entered our home without permission, he refused to leave when asked, and while I was hiding at a neighbor's house, my ex-boyfriend threatened to kill himself in front of my mother if she didn't get me to come home immediately. She called me at the neighbor's house terrified, begging me to do something, and I did the only thing I could think of to do. I called the police. But it was 1989, before these kinds of tribes were taken seriously, when the police learned that the man was my ex-boyfriend, they refused to come, and they wouldn't intervene because it was, quote, "a domestic dispute." I was lucky. I lived in a blue-collar neighborhood where I knew a few dads who were willing to remove my ex from our house, and then his parents, who lived a couple towns over, came and took him home. This guy's been in contact with me a couple of times over the years, so I know a little bit about how this story turned out. His parents got him psychiatric help, and he eventually returned to college, went on to graduate school, got himself a decent job. He's never done anything scary to me or my mother again. As far as I know, he's never been arrested, let alone incarcerated. And I can't help but think about how differently this would have turned out if it happened in Wachem County today. Sure, the police would have come, which is great, because not everybody knows the kind of people who'll help you get an intruding mentally ill boyfriend out of your house. But I'm also sure that he would have gone to jail, and possibly gone on to prison. And then what? He was clearly having a mental health crisis. Would he have snapped in prison? Would he have thrown a tray or a chair at a guard, or done something else that would have given, gotten him labeled as a felon? Would he have ended up in solitary confinement? Would incarceration have pushed him to the point of suicide? Would he have left more broken than he went in? Me and my ex-boyfriend were lucky that his parents had the means to get him mental health help, and it's exactly this sort of community-based mental health treatment that we need in our county. Not mental health beds in a jail complex out in Ferndale, with ill people put in cages and stigmatized for life as criminals.
30 seconds, please.
We need small, Medicaid-fundable facilities scattered throughout our county, so that people can be contained, but still remain in the community while they get the mental health help they need. This is how we're going to keep our community safe, and it's a lot cheaper than turning ill people into convicted felons who cycle in and out of the system because they're traumatized, and they can't find a job or a place to live because of their criminal record. Thank you for considering.
Peter? Then Dean, and then Alex McLean.
I'm Peter Holcomb, and I live in Wachem County. And I'd like to lay two facts before you. One fact is that the United States has the highest percentage of our people locked up than any other country in the world. And then the second fact I'd like to lay before you is that there's an enormous amount of money to be made in locking people up. Some of the biggest corporations are getting into the prison industry, and it's because of the money. And I suppose it starts with a bond issue to build, to build a facility. Anyway, I don't know if one of these, if one of my two facts is a cause of the other one, and if so, which one is the cause, and which one is the effect? I can't answer that. I just know that they go together, and it's, this whole, this whole business, this whole industry of locking people up seems to have a corrupting influence on the community.
Dean? And then Alex, and then Marla Bronstein.
My name is Dean Tuckerman. I live in Bellingham. If they build it, they will fill it. I mean, it's very simple, that jails are, you know, jails are not, they're not the, there's a word I want, and I'm blanking out, but jails are not the answer to the problems of this society, that, that building a jail, building a third jail, in effect, this is a third jail they're building. It is not a replacement jail, because it is not, and there are already two jails in this county, and that almost is not, that almost is too much, but we can move, if we need to retrofit the jail downtown, we can move people around. We don't need a third gigantic jail. It is ridiculous, it is costly, and it's also the tax you're going to put on it. A sales tax is the most regressive tax you can do. Poor people pay the same rate of sales tax as rich people. It is a regressive tax. Do not do this. Wait, think, wait till the report is in. You don't need to do this. It's here. Wait till the report is in. If you need to rebuild the jail downtown, you can move people into the other space, you can take people out of jail. I don't know if I like necessarily the idea of putting people in home lockup, but it's better than, it's better than putting them in a gigantic new jail that is a waste of money. Thank you.
Alex, then Marla, then Carol Perry.
Hey, guys. Alex McLean, I live in Happy Valley. I didn't, I'm not as eloquent as these folks, so I'm going to make them look good for you. I'm not affiliated with any organized group or anything, I just, I have a visceral reaction to America's fixation with locking people up. You know, it's, it's something I've heard about for the last 10 or 20 years now. America has the most damn people locked up of any nation on the planet. You know, a comparison that I read recently was Norway has 74 people locked up per 100,000. We're doing 700 people. So Norway literally has a tenth of the number of people locked up as we do. And it's expensive, man. You guys charge $108 a day, or you're paying, we, these people, are paying $108 a day for every person that's locked up. I'm not too fancy with math, but that's about 40 grand a year, right? So what else can we do with that money? You could, you could pay a drug addiction counselor, you know, a cognitive behavioral therapist. You could have someone helping these folks who are getting into trouble for petty, you know, essentially meaningless things, and as others have said, they're getting cycled into this system where they're entrenched, and we're just paying money incessantly. It's a bottomless deal. Yeah, jail's an expensive way of making bad people worse, and whatever we're doing in this country, it's... bad people worse. And whatever we're doing in this country, it's, it just seems like it's on a death spiral. I don't see it as being a red state or blue state thing, you know. I'm kind of a hippie, but it just, you know, I don't understand why everybody isn't offended by how much this society and now this community is about to invest in a gigantic jail up in Ferndale. And Ferndale's another issue. Are we ready to-
Thirty seconds, please.
Are we ready to commit to moving this building and essentially the whole county seat to Ferndale? Because that's what's going to happen. And you guys know it. You know, the sheriff's office is right there, that's the headquarters, the courthouse is right here. If we have everybody up in jail getting ferried back and forth in sheriffs, you know, in cop cars, eventually we're going to have to move the whole damn system to Ferndale. Doesn't make sense to me. Thanks.
Marla, Carol, and then Max Perry?
Hi, I have a written statement from Irene Morgan who lives on the East Pole Road in Whatcom County. I'm Marla Bronstein. Thank you for this opportunity to read her words into the record. I've had to renege on my earlier statement that I would not comment on the jail issue again. Those in control seem to not understand it is not what our citizens see as the best use of our tax dollars or our best actions for the community. It is not right action. I have been involved and attended many meetings. One of my questions is how much of this proposed sales tax is going into the city coffers and not to the jail? In my opinion, this is a scheme for additional revenues for our cities, not just a jail tax. I've lived in my home for 71 years. Portions of it are 100 years old and in good condition. Why is our 30-year-old jail in such horrible and unsafe condition? Poor maintenance and a deliberate design to force us into their jail plan? Jack Lous has not freely given the proper numbers for the proposed jail. Only when questioned did he admit that instead of 440 beds, the numbers would be closer to 500. Jail Chief Wendy Jones has been asked many times for stats regarding who is in jail, how many are waiting on bail, who is charged with felonies though not yet convicted, et cetera. She continues to say she doesn't have them or can't get them. Why? She is the chief. If she were in the private sector and not doing her job, she would not be employed. Division Street, I've noticed that the greenhouses and gardens have not been used for at least two years. Why? A few years ago, the sheriff bragged about how awesome the program was. I've noticed a trend. Implement a program and a few years later, close it, the public thinks it's still in operation. Thank you to those of you who are responsible for implementing the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force and hiring Vera Institute to study our systems. A lot of research of alternatives has been done since the task force was formed. A recent finding is that Walla Walla and Chelan Counties have taken the operations of the jail from the sheriff and now is the commissioner's duties. This might be a possible solution for Whatcom County. And these counties repaired their jails instead of building new ones. As has been reported, Bellingham and Lemmy Nation have made exceptional strides reducing the jail numbers and costs with the alternatives they have implemented. Vera Institute has identified over 30 more areas where we can reduce the numbers in our arrests and jail. Let's not be hasty in putting the cart before the horse. Let's look at our current habits, prosecutorial discretion, continuances in the courtroom, no restorative justice, to name a few. Please do not move this jail sales tax forward. It is not right action for all. Let Vera Institute and the task force do their jobs. You spent good money on them, let them work. Reduce the numbers in the jail and we don't need a bigger, fancier prison-like jail. Thank you very much.
Carol, then Max, and then Everett Barton?
Carol Perry, Whatcom County. If you haven't gotten the direction yet from the testimonies this evening, think about it. The greatest need that we have is for correct information about the jail. And I remember the day, Council, when you excoriated the, I think that's the right word, the executive for trying to put out a bulletin, a little brochure. I think what you should do is get behind educating the people in this chamber and in the county about the need. Each one of you have said in one time or another, we need a jail. That's settled. It's just the number of beds. And you know the hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been spent. And I appeal on the, to the administration as well. Show the people all the work that's been done, if you can. Make a video, Council, make a video of the jail, of the condition of the jail. Then show them, as the executive did last meeting, the boxes, the books, the quantity of material, the hours. I myself have sat through, it seems like hundreds of hours. How much more time and money can we waste? I appeal to you, get behind it. That's all that was lacking last time it was on the ballot, was, was your, your push and your education of the people. Give them the information. Look at the testimonies here tonight already. People don't know. Thank you for your time.
Max and then Everett and then Bob Burr.
Max Perry, Whatcom County. And the, following that act, Carol's, it's hard to do. But I'm just bringing up the, all the things that you've gone through with DLR, with your incarceration committees, with your jail committees on it. You've had study after study, you've had a committee, a group come up and evaluate our current jail to see if it could be renovated and improved upon. It could not. They recommended that you replace it, that you do something else with it. So the DLR suggested, first of all, 630 beds, which you thought was way too high, then they got down to 510 beds. And you, no, you thought they weren't doing the job, so you got rid of them. You put in the incarceration committee, it's gone through. They didn't come up with a, with a number. But I think this 440 beds is probably rappantational and could be useful. And it could be used for your, with your work release on it, having, having people in beds on that, having people with, with drug problems, with, with emotional problems, everything. So that seems to be one central place it could be done. And I think you've got a great sheriff. I think you've got a great bunch of law enforcement people here in the county that protect us, that do good. But I think they're, they're being hamstrung right now and I think it's, it's time to put that on the ballot for all of you to get behind it and get it done. Thank you.
Everett, then Bob, and then Diane Foster?
Everett Barton, 24-year resident, presently at Puget Neighborhood. I just want to underscore what Tim Johnson said in this week's Cascadia, decisions before data. And we're, we're in the middle of a Jackson Pollock. Things being thrown on the canvas. And I just want to point out another, another fact that we don't, that's kind of lost on us because of the situation. But we as taxpayers are really shareholders of the corporation. So that has to be underscored because I know each one of us wants to come up and wag the dog. We have a little bit of spout to put on that canvas. But we are the shareholders of the corporation. We can't ask for a resignation on a day when Chairman Imel is no longer the CEO of GE. We cannot envision Whatcom County without our, our current CEO. And these men represent the shareholders. And we, we were counting on at least three of them, the newbie is absent. Well, I hope the newbie would have put his foot down and said, we need to sell the land, restore the money to the county coffers, repurpose, repurpose, repurpose. And that's kind of, should be the position of the shareholders, in my estimation. Thank you.
Bob, Diane, and then Clint Lincoln?
I'm Bob Burr from the Barclay Neighborhood. And I've been homebound for most of the year, but now I'm back. The county is putting the cart before the horse, proceeding before the consultant's report is in, and before a full needs assessment has been made. This is a waste of taxpayer money. And tells me that you are disinterested in the results. As it stands now, the proposed jail is still too lo, large and is in a bad location. You have taken baby steps towards the, towards restorative justice, jail alternatives, and recognition that your jail has become a de facto mental hospital for the mentally ill. One who is poor should never have to stay in jail in a pre-trial period unless a clear danger for which a rich man would be denied bail. It appears that you are starting to get it. You need more time to actively take to heart the advice that you have been given. You are on the road to defeat in November if you try to sneak in again an unlawful puff piece to the voters at the voter's expense. Don't try that again. It backfired on you. And if you do, please run it by the county council, rather than keeping it a secret of a triumvirate that should have known better. Finding the county desperately needs a new jail or a renovated jail. That's what is so upsetting. It is a hellhole, the current jail, and to date, your plans for a new jail lack a legitimate assessment.
Diane, then Clint, and then Amy Malone?
Hello, Diane Foster, Seehome Neighborhood. I just had a bone marrow transplant, so I look really funny and I'm all puffed up on prednisone, but otherwise, I'm the same person. So I'm here tonight because I was here in 2011 at the last public hearing on the jail issue. There was an overflow crowd, if you remember, chairs stacked out in the foyer. What I remember was the public said they wanted the jail smaller, located downtown on bus lines, and close to the courthouse. They want a needs assessment to keep us in line with national standards. And they wanted something like the Kitsap County Jail, appropriate size to population ratio. We did get a fair enough task force with even representation from Barbara Sternberger of the right-sized jail. That ended, and then a new, real task force was created of insiders that was totally secret, no public records. And voila, everything we didn't want was on the docket. Big, expansive, expansive, on land near the border that needs millions in wetland mitigation. Frankly, I don't believe wetlands can be mitigated, but that's another subject. So there was a guy I remember over there from Sudden Valley who said he was a jail architect and he volunteered his advice. And there was a woman over here who said she lives downtown and thought it should be placed near her. These were not nimby's, they were sincere. So question, was anyone taken up on their offer to volunteer help that night? Even I believed this was democracy in action until my neighbor next to me said, "Don't be naive. I'll believe it when I see it." So here we are, six years later and 13 years after the current jail was declared deteriorated. And what has happened? We, the public, have now paid over $4 million out on LaBounty for land that should be worth about $1,700,000. And I'm sure others tonight will explain how that price was jacked up for speculation by our county executive. And now, shockingly, we also have Homeland Security right there on that jacked up property also paid for with public dollars at an exorbitant price. Hmm, imagine that. So I have a friend years ago who said that, "You wait and see. This is not about a local jail. It's about having a detention center near the border for Homeland Security money." Everyone thought she was a little paranoid, but here you go. So I tell you, sometimes I wonder if we live in the USA or Somalia. The stench of corruption is so apparent to us, the public. Follow-up questions. Number one-
Thirty seconds, please.
Why was the original construction firm from the 1983 jail not sued for their bonded insurance money? Is that still possible? Number two, is there intention to sell off this very expensive jail to a private company when it becomes evident that we, the public, can't afford to maintain it? Side note, privatization is the means to a corporate state, which we are seeing on the national, international stage, and from which it is almost impossible to extricate.
Time.
Loss of our commons is threatened along with democracy. I don't want to see us have to sell out to the security industrial complex out of desperation. Our public sector is already in massive debt, brought on by the Wall Street takedown of our economy in '08. Let us not be the latest victims.
Clint, Amy, and then Eric Lawrence?
Hello. Clint Lincoln, Whatcom County resident, 37 years. Thank you for the chance to speak. I highly empathize with the council and the tough decisions that are presented in this situation. There is a chance that the largest capital project in Whatcom County council history could be an investment in people's failure. I'd like to speak about the county council meeting that happened May 30th, two weeks ago, where county executive Jack Lous put on a big show and went back to his office, came back with all those boxes of binders just to pull out one outdated needs assessment from 2013 that did not encompass the work from the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force. It did not encompass the hundreds of thousands of dollars we've saved in electronic home monitoring. It did not encompass the solutions from the Restorative Community Coalition. And it also didn't encompass the stuff from the Vera Institute that'll be here July 10th. I also witnessed when Jack was speaking to the council and he told you, quote, "If the $6 million purchase that you made is a mistake, and you want to identify that as a mistake, then it is going to take time. And I think the cities are going to want to know an answer to that." End quote. As a Whatcom County resident, I am concerned about the county executive bullying and guilt tripping the council when A, only three of the seven current county council members were even a part of that vote. One of them voted against it, and one of them never wanted the jail on that property to begin with. My next question would be, whose job is it to manage the current deteriorating jail? Is it the county executive? Is it the county sheriff? Or is it the county council? These are a couple of quotes about the Whatcom County jail from the Whatcom County Sheriff, Bill Elfo. He said, quote, "We have a human rights issue, a liability issue, and it cannot go on." He also said, quote, "It is our responsibility to operate a jail in a safe and constitutional manner. And my belief is we're falling very short of that right now. Please, fix the current jail now before the Whatcom County taxpayers have to cover a lawsuit." Thank you.
Amy? And Eric, and then Ronna Lurch?
Amy Malone, resident of Bellingham, Washington. You asked us here, I'll here to give you a number. But how can we give you a number without hearing from the Vera Institute? They have not yet given you a report. You've spent tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands just to hire the Vera Institute, and yet you are trying to put a measure on the ballot before you have heard their report. That seems irresponsible to me and a waste of our taxpayer money once again. I also want to, I'm wondering about all the good work of your own Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force. We have not heard from them at a county council meeting that I am aware of. I have been attending their meetings for the past couple of months and they are doing some great work. They are making amazing recommendations and movements forward, as well as the city of Bellingham has saved, I believe it was $300,000 in 2016 on electronic home monitoring by expanding that program. expanding that program. And as the first quarter of 2017, they have saved $296,000 in just one quarter. That sounds to me like we could continue those programs and expand them into the county and save us hundreds of thousands more money, millions of dollars. We also are, what about the progress of the Lummi and Nooksak nations? They have been removing their people from the Waukam County jail and implementing their own restorative justice programs and building shelters for the homeless and working with their people. It seems like we have, if we are continuing to put money into a new jail, where is the money to be put into prevention, reduction, and diversion programs? We're not going to have that money. I also have a question. Where is the money from the previous sales taxes for the jail and public safety? Those sales tax monies are ongoing, are they not? So, where is that money? Why can't that money be budgeted properly to fix the jail? That is not under dispute. Nobody here tonight is saying we don't need a new jail, that that jail's fine. We all know it's, pardon my language, a shithole, from what I have heard. I haven't been there, but I've heard many stories. It needs to be fixed. You're going to have to fix it anyways before you build a new jail, so why not take the money that you have and fix the jail? Move people over to Division Street, which is a medium-security facility, not an interim jail, not a work release. It was initially built as a medium facility. I'd also like to share a statistic with you from Judge Cedric Kearns of Las Vegas. Five percent of people in jail are incorrigible. They cannot be helped, no matter what you do. Five percent, as your average person, they're going to have one encounter with the system, and you never see them again. That leaves 90% of the population that can, that are the work, is what he said. Those are the people that can be rehabilitated, they can get job reskilling, they need homes, they need counseling for drug abuse, mental health, et cetera. Thank you.
Eric, and then Ronna, and then Charles White?
Hi, I'm Eric. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative, and I am a resident of Bellingham and a student at Western Washington University. As we know from what many have said today, building this new jail is not necessary. And furthermore, it reveals the position that the Waukam County Council, where their priorities actually lie. By pushing through this jail, you're all siding with the prison industrial complex and against the people of Waukam County. You're siding against the 99%. By pushing through this jail, you're prioritizing corporate profits over people. You were elected to represent the people, and so I challenge you to actually do that. And you can prove me wrong by putting mental health care services, taking care of people, affordable housing, as your main priority, not locking us up. Thank you.
Ronna, then Charles, then Deborah David?
Good evening. My name is Ronna Lurch, and I live in Everson, Washington, Waukam County. About the size of the jail, that is the purpose of this meeting, how would I even know? Because I don't have any data that is actually in process to know what I could say to you. I think that this tax measure is not the crisis. There is certainly a crisis, but it isn't about putting this measure on the ballot. We also voted no on that. So, what is happening, though, sounds really good. And I would like to just make a point that the people who have been speaking so far are incredibly educated about whatever facts are out there about the jail. They're doing their research, and they are educated. Jail diversion needs more work, can never end that. We need to end the pipelines. Mentally ill need services and housing, not jail. The homeless need homes, not jail. The poor need living wage work, not jail. The addicted people need better services, not jail. Those are pipelines, that needs to end. Place? Man, I'll tell you, Ferndale is not the place, and I agree with a few people who have spoken. There's something fishy afoot here. The plan is to get out of Bellingham and move the county seat out to Ferndale, and that is going to cost us, the taxpayers, a lot of money. I mean, otherwise, the people incarcerated have to come into town for arraignment, and then lawyers have to go out there, families, how do they get out there? Something fishy is afoot. I'd say follow the money. We're going to say that there has been, the process of securing that property seems pretty fishy, even corrupt. So, this is most probably being put on the ballot when we said no to a similar project just two years ago. We said no then, and with more research out about incarceration rates decreasing and extreme cost savings being used with alternatives, this tax seems counterproductive to increasing the safety of our community. We could even start by putting some benches in downtown Bellingham so that the homeless people could rest. Thank you.
Charles, then Deborah, and then Deborah Holly?
Good evening. My name's Charles White. I'd like to encourage y'all to have some courage and stand up to the corruption that's going on. It's all about money. It's about people making money on people's misery. And the taxpayers who voted, they don't want this jail. Mass incarceration, I think, is a leading cause of homelessness in our country nationwide. It's getting worse every dang year. And a mega jail here in Waukam County is going to perpetuate it. It's going to make things worse. It's a Pandora's Box. Thank you.
Deborah, and then the other Deborah, and then Mary Kay Robinson?
I appreciate this opportunity to come and talk to you. Deborah David, 27-year resident, Waukam County, Bellingham County and City. I came here 27 years ago after 17 years of civil service in Wisconsin. I worked a variety of departments, and the last being Administration Department of Corrections. While there, and I'll share this because it's relative to what we're all dealing with with this vote, is there are errors that, when you work in an office, that are called housekeeping errors, but when it comes to corrections and jail records, that's people's lives, that's people in the community, that's not okay. That can be, as Lisa Farino shared her story about what happened with an ex-boyfriend, the difference between whether someone's locked up for their entire life, or they get a shot at recovery and have a healthy, productive life and be taxpayers, contributing citizens to society. I'm the mother of three, grandmother of seven, two of which are developmentally disabled, they're toddlers, a three-year-old grandson with downs, a four-year-old granddaughter with autism. Those two children, which are precious blessings to our entire family and our extended family, are just waiting victims for this horrible system that will eat them alive once they become adults because there are not proper mental health care, supportive environmental services for our human beings in our county and in this country. I would like to leave this last question for you. As civil servants yourself, what will be your legacy 30 years from now of what you decide to do? How you decide to hold the office and make decisions and channel these funds that you are responsible for? Will they be to help improve our community and serve the members, everyone considered? Or will it be to throw away the marginalized? Lock them away so no one has to bother with them, walk by them on the sidewalk, dirty and forgotten? Thank you.
Deborah, then Mary Kay, and then Chris Freeman?
I don't want to get too close to this, but anyway, my name is Deborah Holly. I'm from Lummi Island, Washington. I've been a resident of Waukam County for about 30 years. I have a son who has been in the criminal justice system and continues to be to this day for 20 years. I decided to turn my pain into purpose, I don't know, nine years ago, went back to graduate school in a program that taught me about systems theory, and I graduated in, from it, rather, seven years ago. And that systems theory study was my area of specialization, was in raising awareness to the public about mass incarceration in the United States. And I ended up starting a support group seven years ago to work with and be part of families like myself who have incarcerated loved ones. So, I had a few things that I wanted to share here tonight. In systems theory, often people will divide the world into two different groups based on how they see the world around them, and that is event-oriented thinkers or systems thinkers. Most people, probably over 95%, are event-oriented. They see the world as a ragtag collection of parts and events. Each event has a cause, and if you want to solve a problem, find the cause and fix it. I'm going to skip over to get through this. Systems thinkers see the problem differently. They don't see people's misbehaviors as part of a problem. Instead, they see the structure of the system as causing the misbehavior. Recent research shows us that mass incarceration is being driven more by jails than it is currently by prisons. In an article written by Juliet Daniels, published in Waukam County Law and Justice on May 13th, 2017, called Part One, "The Illusion of Inclusion," in summary, she talks about the task force. And I did, I was a candidate for being on that task force, and didn't end up being on it, but did attend some meetings. And I feel, really found myself in the article that Juliet wrote about inclusion in that. I went to the meetings and kind of sat on the sidelines, and I haven't been to them for a while. But it did feel like, with the exception of Irene Morgan, who was there, there still wasn't a family member who has experienced firsthand what happens in the criminal justice system when your loved one enters Waukam County Jail, as mine did, or any county jail, and then escalates into the prison system. People don't go, people don't go into prison and go into jail, they start in jail. So, to end this, I was at my son's P.O. appointment today for his DOC officer, and his file started in Waukam County is this thick. The other files that were pulled out were about this thick. My son is in violation right now and has a mental health issue, very serious. He's not getting any help. The status quo here, it's just about whether we're going to continue the status quo or whether we're going to do something to cut the file down from this to something that could help my son before he goes back to prison again for a long time. That'll be his fourth sentence. Thank you.
Mary Kay, then Chris, and then Brian Heinrich?
Good evening, Mary Kay Robinson. I'm a 30-year resident of Waukam County. The county has dawdled over a new jail facility for far too long. The need has been obvious for years, compounded by overcrowding, structural deficiencies. The current jail has serious problems with security, structural integrity, and life safety systems. We aren't responsibly housing inmates with a variety of serious needs. A fire, earthquake, or other catastrophe could result in an enormous loss of lives. Also, the current facility is a lawsuit waiting to happen. Yet, we continue to risk the lives of employees, inmates, and visitors with a failure to strongly support a proposal for a new facility. Compromises have been made since the proposal two years ago was defeated. Now, we are millions more in increase in construction costs that are resulting from waiting for two more years for a smaller jail. In fact, most people on both sides probably aren't happy with the compromises, but the time for studies, task forces, and negotiations has passed. Now is the time for Waukam County Council and Bellingham City Council to join the rest of the cities in the county and see passage of this proposal. The proposed facility incorporates design features and systems to maximize safety, security, and operational efficiencies. It provides for educational and treatment programs to reduce recidivism. It's centrally located on a property already purchased by the county in a vote that many of you approved. It's also accommodates expansion, if needed, in the years to come. The responsible and humane thing to do for our county and city leaders is to actively support the passage of this proposal. Thank you.
Chris, then Brian Heinrich, and then John Muchler?
Chris Freeman, Blaine, Washington. I don't come to talk about a task force or an assessment. I come from ground zero. I walk in that building every day with my brothers and sisters and put my uniform on. Do we have dangerous people in there? Yes. I've had myself and my family threatened on multiple occasions. I've been assaulted. I've quelled riots. I've seen, I've saved lives, I've seen life lost, and we all carry that with us. The size of this jail is important, and a lot of people bring up good points. There are mental health issues, there's drug addiction issues, there's domestic violence issues. If we don't increase the size to where we can provide the services to the people we incarcerate, we can't expect them to be corrected in their behavior. The mental health system is obviously broken, and it's something I deal with on a daily basis. You can't take mental health people to the hospital. They won't deal with them. They end up in the jail because there's no beds. So, until that system is fixed, there's no other option for the officers on the road, except for to bring them to us to incarcer them to keep the public safe and this individual safe from themselves. So, the size is important. Right now, we cannot house our mental health offenders safely, or the general population inmates safely, because they don't mix and they can't mix, and we don't have the space. We have violent people, we have doors that don't lock, that can be kicked open, a building that's falling down, plumbing that doesn't work. I actually had a gentleman pull out an eight-inch piece of copper pipe from the sink the other day and brandish it as a weapon. So, yes, this building is an issue and it is unsafe. There's good points. Drug court's great, it should be funded. Mental health court's great, it should be funded. There has to be options. But until the bigger picture is fixed via the mental health system, drug treatment that is actually going to work and be effective, there really is no other option, and it's forced upon us to deal with that. And me personally, I would like to be able to deal with that in a safe environment, and my family would appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Brian, then John, and then Nicole Callen?
Good evening, Council Brian Heinrich, City of Bellingham. I'm here representing the mayor's office tonight. As you know, this was a, or has been a difficult negotiation. It's complicated, and I do appreciate that a couple weeks ago, you sent the agreement over for the city to consider. I did want to point out, of the many things in the agreement, there are three that I believe are very important to the mayor and to the city of Bellingham. One, the inclusion of 36 medical or behavioral health beds to meet that emerging need in the facility, in the new facility, those would be very valuable. The creation of an advisory board that can make recommendations to the sheriff, to the executive, and to the council on the operations and financial matters related to the jail. And third, the expanded use of greater alternatives to incarceration. The mayor shares many of the concerns that we've heard here tonight, and we believe that there's a commitment in that agreement that will expand alternatives to incarceration, much like Bellingham is used with electronic home monitoring and the expansion of work release and things related to those alternatives. So, appreciate you sending that agreement over, and the city will be considering that soon. So, thank you.
John, then Nicole, and then Roger Shute?
My name is John Muchler, and I'm the mayor of Ferndale. I've also been a pastor here in Waukam County for some three decades, and I've been visiting the Waukam County Jail since 1988, meeting with people, some of them friends, on the worst days of their lives, and I get it. And I want to thank you for your persistent efforts to craft a solution to our jail need, a solution with complicated moving parts, size, services, location, and financing. It has been a long journey to this place, with many partners, Waukam County, Bellingham, six smaller but growing cities, two tribes, nearly a quarter million citizens, some 60 to 70 elected officials and their staffs working on this. This progress, this process shows that we can work together to come up with a critical and workable solution, and this is it. We've known that our current jail facility would need to be replaced for over a decade, and you know what? Perhaps being such a large decision, it needed that time for such a diverse community to get it right. Now, no mayor's ever thrilled to have a jail within their city limits. There will be impacts, there will be unhappy neighbors, but at the end of the day, the proposal on the table is the right decision, and I support it. I'm not completely thrilled with the agreement, but it is a fair deal for all involved. And last week- And last week, we, Ferndale, joined most of the other cities in supporting it. Now, it's an easy thing to share our thoughts on the criminal justice system, the so-called militarization of our police, or our concern for mental health and addiction support services. I get it. These are all good issues to discuss and debate in the public forum, but as a mayor, I don't deal with the theoretical or the philosophical. We deal with the practical and the concrete reality of needing to have a safe community, safe from destructive people. And the reality is this, we need a facility where we can hold the violent and dangerous offenders, and regardless of how they got there, for our safety, we need a secure place to hold these people. We need a safe place to put the bad guys. That said, we need a facility that keeps these offenders close to their families, close to their communities, and close to those critical opportunities for redemption. We need a facility that has the room required to provide rehabilitation programs and to grow as our community grows. We need this facility, and this is a fair way to pay for it. Colleagues, this is a fragile document. Nobody gets everything they want. A solid number of our Ferndale council members believe a larger jail was required, but they'll support this, knowing that Ferndale's site can be expanded. Again, this is a fragile agreement. Please don't muck it up now. It's the compassionate, safe, and fiscally smart thing to do, and thank you for your time.
Nicole, Roger, then Andronetta Douglas.
Thank you for hearing me today. I've worked over in the Waukesha County Jail for about two years now. It's not so much the inmates that have to deal with the day-to-day struggle there, it's myself and my coworkers. We're in a dangerous environment daily where doors don't close. There is ever an earthquake, I've already told my children, I would probably die because the building would crumble down on all of us, and any survivors would be very unlikely. While a lot of the community likes to talk about rehabilitation and mental health court and also drug treatment programs, that's great for the people that'll actually use them and want those changes to occur in their lives. For the people that are refusing medication, for the people that go out and abuse the system again, or have multiple DUIs or drug infractions that don't want change, there has to be somewhere to put them. They have to keep the streets safe for everyone else that's in the public's eye, so that the bad guys, like the mayor just said, can be put somewhere safe. Thank you.
Roger, and Andronetta, then Mike Kaufman.
Hello, council. My name's Roger Shuckey. I am on the board of directors of a nonprofit in town called Ground Alliances. A recent graduate of Western Washington University, and am deeply opposed to, well, not opposed to building a new jail, but of going forward with this current motion to build this jail. A few months ago, I toured the jail with a class. Yes, there's lots of problems with it. I went around with the guy that gives the tours and asks many questions, such as how many mental health professionals work here, why are there windows, blocks over the windows where there's no light, why isn't there more color in here, what's preventing that? Do you talk to any social scientists about how to make this facility feel more safe? There's lots of, I guess what I'm saying is that we're really behind the curve with how we're addressing incarceration in our country. I encourage you all to do further research while appreciating all the hard work that you do with a variety of other tasks. But I also want to share another story. I come from a family where my mom had the opportunity to go to jail, my stepfather went to jail multiple times. He's still a drunk and is continuing to go back to jail because the jail in at least Thurston County wasn't treating him properly. My mom was offered drug court when I was in the third grade, went through that system, and now sits on the top of Washington State Mental Health Budget from Washington State Mental Health Services and inpatient hospitals. So she decides where all the money goes to inpatient hospitals and trying to provide more beds for people here. This year, there was a lack of, they couldn't find any more inpatient hospitals to give money to or any more proposed projects to, that they were scrambling around to try to find this last bit of money that they were given by the federal government to use. I would guess what I'm saying is that we can provide those solutions here that are outside of the jail, and at least wait for the results of the Vera Institute to really see what our problems are. Thank you.
Andronetta, then Mike, and then Ray Barbo.
My name is Andronetta Douglas, and I live in Bellingham. I have been, I went to the last two meetings of the jail task force, and they do work hard, and I do respect what they came up with. However, I saw in various articles that in across the South, places like Mississippi have actually reduced their jail population by twenty-four percent. That clearly shows this is a bipartisan tipping point in the population of the United States wanting to find other alternatives besides incarceration. I know you all know this. There's a lot of ways to improve this. I hope that we wait for the Vera report. I know that in the South, they had a Justice Reinvestment Initiative that the state of Mississippi worked with, and in the first year, they were able to decrease the jail population by fourteen percent, and it's come up to twenty-four percent. There's a lot of issues with having things like money for bail, because it keeps the poor people in jail unnecessarily. And just looking at the larger jail population at large, it's frightening what it does to our, to the people of our state. When I was at the end of my nursing career, as a hospice nurse, I had to report one of the members of the family of one of my patients to, for committing child incest. At that point, it was investigated, and he did end up in jail. That family cursed me because they ended up homeless. So I've taken, basically, I helped take a child from a very unsafe situation and made their situation worse. And so we really need to look at what we're doing with the, with the people of our state. Thank you.
Mike, then Ray, and then Charlie Storrs.
Good evening, Mike Kaufman, County. First like to say, I listened to a TED Talk recently, and it talked about how our suburbs, I'm a child of the suburbs of Cleveland, Ohio, and how the corporations and zoning and planning manipulated the system, starting after World War I and certainly after World War II, to make my life better as a white guy in the suburbs, and what it did to put down certain groups in the cities. I was quite taken by how things, I'm a product of the way things were planned in a lot of ways, and live with it. But earlier this year, I shared my thoughts with you on the, on why I voted against the EMS levy, and this is why I did not support the jail the first time around, and I, at this point, from what I believe and see, would not support it again. I recently went through several weeks, a month, with my elderly parents with 9/11, hospital, and our healthcare system. And it seems in this world, in our world, that if you're in emergency, you call 911, boom, they take you to the ER, and the ER is there to preserve life at all cost, and then the hospital, and then there's nothing. And there's a new term out there, palliative care, as I'm understanding it, because after the hospital, then you could get hospice, only if you're within six months of dying and being dead. And there's no way to deal with the elderly people and the needs that they have. So our system does that. And I see our court system and our legal system the same way. It's, if you're against the law, you get arrested, you go to jail, and jail, you go to court, and court, and then you got to have money, and that's the way it is. Boom. It's just, there's no middle ground in our system, and our hospitals, our healthcare, and our jails are eating up the vast majority of our tax money. And that, when we open our eyes and we look and try and find some middle ground in here, some place to help ease the systems of our healthcare, that we save money, and the outcome is better for all of the citizens involved. And so I would like to also say that I second Joy Gilfillan. I've been around her a bit and have debated with her and understood these issues, and I second a lot of things that she says. And I also second what the officer said earlier here, the gentleman in the mariner's uniform. And he basically was saying that, you know, until you fix the health problem, then give me more beds to keep me safe. So let's spend all of our tax money on the jail. We got nothing left to fix the health problem, which he would like to see fixed. Let's find some middle ground in here. It's not rocket scientist science. I believe we can do it. Thank you.
Ray, Charlie, then Jess Barrios.
Hi, good evening, Ray Barbo, Waukesha County. I originally was intending to speak about the Jail Planning Task Force, where I was one of thirteen members in 2011. In no time at all today, I found my 2011 calendar, and we met every other Thursday at 7:30 in the morning for months. And we had open public sessions for people to talk to us. The reason the task force met at 7:30 in the morning, it was a high-quality group of people, with architects, construction people, people that work for the county, and they had jobs. So we had to accommodate their work schedule. I really don't want to say much more about the Jail Planning Task Force, except when it was all done, we realized we didn't have the talent or the knowledge to pick a site for the jail. That needed some expertise, and we also didn't have the expertise to pick the size. We made a recommendation of five hundred to seven hundred beds. I've now attended every meeting of the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force, which I wish had been named the Arrest Prevention and Incarceration Reduction Task Force, because you get your ticket punched for incarceration by being arrested. You get arrested for behavior, all right? That's a foundational thing. Misbehave to a certain degree, and a policeman will arrest you. Now, what happens after that is the issue. I've heard both the people about seven years ago from Bear County, Texas, at San Antonio, who put together a task force somewhat similar to the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force. They had to get Texas state laws changed, they did, they had the right people at the table, much like our task force. They had an overcrowded jail issue, they improved things for people with mental illness, addiction, things like that, and now their jail is still overcrowded. I attended the people from Las Vegas that were here that have wonderful therapeutic courts, and I think there's some ideas that could be used locally to improve our therapeutic courts. They had a good story to tell. They've been doing it for ten years, they did it because they haven't had an overcrowded jail. They are doing wonderful work for a lot of people. They still have an overcrowded jail. So the issue tonight for this hearing was the size of the jail. None of us can predict what's the right size for a jail, nobody in this room, and no matter what size you build it, you will outgrow it. I thought when the Incarceration Prevention Task Force started with the good things that were coming out, and if the programs were implemented, they might reduce the jail population by two percent. I'm more optimistic now. It might be three to five percent. You're still going to need a sizable jail to keep people safe, and remember, jail is an adult timeout.
Time.
Sometimes you, the way you get people to embrace the programs is to give them that timeout. Thank you.
Charlie, then Jess, and then Wendy Tarkow.
Charlie Storrs, Waukesha County resident since 1999. It's too bad Mr. Donovan isn't here, because we would like to present lots of facts to him. And I apologize, these facts lead us to have opinions, and you're going to get the opinions mixed in with the facts. The fact is, this is pretty easy to verify, the United States has five percent of the world's population. The United States has twenty-five percent of the people incarcerated in their system. So this is a five-times disparity between what the U.S. does and what the rest of the world does. We don't have to lock up people at the rate that we do. At one point, Mr. Donovan was having discussion, and they were talking about a thirty percent population increase, and that that would be a thirty percent increase in the jail size. That just does not have to be true. There are lots of proven material to let you know how to reduce the jail population. There was an article just today in the National Broadcasting Service, published an article about how rural counties are pushing the increased incarceration rates, because it's a job creator. It is the major industry in their counties. You are talking about a jail which is going to be the largest public infrastructure project ever in the county. This is going to be the signature thing for Waukesha County is the jail. We've got the biggest and the best. It's not a library, it's not a sports arena, it's not some sort of public arts foundation. We're going to have the biggest jail. I think that's insane. The facts are readily available, there's a series of articles in Northwest Citizen, and yes, the facts are mixed in with opinion, because the facts lead you to the opinion that we jail way too many people. This is compared to anybody worldwide, it's no problem whatsoever. We had a study done. The study was done by our contractor. When you build a home, you don't ask your contractor how big of a home you should have, you don't ask your contractor what sort of fixtures your home should have. Asking your contractor how much home he should build for you and charge you for it, that is insane. This is the cart before the horse. You've got the incarceration tax forces, you've got subcommittees on those tax forces. You haven't let them report back, and you haven't let them implement anything. They haven't even had a chance to come up with a proposal tailored to our situation. You've got the Vera Report, it's going to come. Wait for the facts to come up and let you know what you can do to reduce the need for the jail. The county could pay people's bail and save money. Seventy percent of the people in the jail have not been sentenced. You pay their bail and get them out where they can resume their jobs and be productive citizens, and you will save money. Thank you very much. This is a tough subject, and I'm glad you guys are putting up with this.
Jess, and then Wendy, and then Dave Charleston.
Hello, my name is Jess Barrios, I live in Waukesha County. I've been an employee of the sheriff's office for the last thirteen years. Currently, I've been assigned to the Jail Alternative Work Police Program for the last two years. So I hear a lot about jail diversions, jail alternatives, and I, just from what I've heard this evening, it seems there's some misinformation or lack of information. Currently, they're shutting down jail alternative programs around the state. I received calls from other jurisdictions asking if their people can go onto our programs because their programs are no longer available. I'm thankful that the sheriff has had the foresight and the fortitude to continue funding the jail alternative programs in the county and not cutting our budget or eliminating them. On a daily basis, I think we hear jail alternatives, jail diversion, and I think there's a subtle difference, but I think it's a big difference. Just as I would be opposed to privatizing corrections, I would also be opposed to privatizing jail alternatives. I don't think jail alternatives is just about diverting people from jail. I believe jail alternatives is trying to teach them an alternative lifestyle, trying to, through the different programs that we have, through coaching, we, when we have them on our caseloads, we spend a lot of time talking to them and helping them to work through problems that arise in their lives while they're on our- through problems that arise in their lives while they're on our programs. As I tell the people when they're coming on my programs that I realize your life does not stop because now you're incarcerated. So that is an aspect that I don't think exists in the private realm of jail diversion. They're just trying to keep them out of a jail bed. I think, again, that we are trying to give them an alternative to the lifestyle of crime that keeps them coming back to us repeatedly. And I would just ask you to put this ballot on the, or put this on the ballot, put the measure on the ballot, and let the voters decide. Thank you.
Wendy, and then Dave, and then last name Smith, and the first name, I'm sorry, I just can't quite make it out.
Hi, my name's Wendy Tarkin. I'm a resident of Bellingham, Washington. Regarding the size of the jail, we can't predict that, but we do expect Watcom County to grow. We expect that with all of the outreach programs we have towards the homeless and all the benefits we give people that need some help, that crime will grow as well. We currently have, what, four hundred people in jail? I expect it would be a lot larger. My husband is a work crew supervisor. What the work crews do is take out those that are in custody and put them to work picking up garbage. My husband plants trees and clears streams. There's other crews that work in the forest. I've met some of the people on his crew. They come up to him and say, "Thank you. You're the man." They introduce their moms, or their wives, or their children, or brothers to him, and say, "This guy, he taught me some respect. He made me get up. He made me do a hard day's work. He counted how many times I swore during the day and pointed it out such that I learned to maybe keep my mouth a little cleaner." The programs that we do at Watcom County, I understand that there's a big push for Friendship Diversion Services, but I really think you should take a look at what we're doing a little more closely. Regarding mental health, you can't arrest someone simply for behaving differently than the norm. It's not a crime to have a mental issue. If you end up in jail and have a mental health issue, it's because you also committed a crime. The two issues are intertwined. You need both. You need health diversion help, and you need the ability at the jail to house separately from standard population, those with mental issues. As the deputy said, it's not safe there. The building itself, renovating it would be a big, in my opinion, waste of money. Second floor, for those who've ever been there, it's one big line, one big row. A deputy cannot see in all those cells at the same time. They're supposed to, each, there's six tanks up there. Within each of those tanks, there are two-person cells. We have to use those for one person per cell because it's not safe. The deputy cannot watch what is going on everywhere at the same time. As the deputy said, doors can get kicked open.
Thirty seconds, please.
Fixing it, fine. It's still gonna be a three-story building with outdated housing modules, with electronic systems that constantly need to be fixed. Thanks.
Dave, and then Mr. or Ms. Smith?
Good evening, counsel. My name is Dave Charleston. I'm a resident of Watcom County for the last, gosh, forty-five years, I guess. And I've been recently retired as a supervisor of jail work crews here in the county. I'm one of those guys that Wendy just referred to. And I'm here to address, I guess primarily my job. I know my job really well. I knew my job well. And I know that to be able to be a trainer of men, to see corrections for what it is, corrections, which from my angle is what I do best, what I did best. I can't address the space issue, except that I know that in the work center, when it's crowded, there are other issues that come up. Behavior issues. We've already talked about that somewhat quite a bit, actually. But that, my concern has been more, as I said, in the training area. But I have heard, and we've been over this so many times in the past, you as a counsel, the repetitive nature of what's going on, the search for answers for, you know, the size of the jail and so forth. I tend to agree with those that are Ray Barabo, and especially because I know Ray. He's a considerate man, and I believe that he's speaking the truth when he speaks about the size of the jail. It's gonna continue to grow. It can't help but grow. We are naive if we think that people are gonna stop committing crime. We're being very naive if we think that. The paint on the wall, it might change the way they behave. A repetitive criminal will continue to be a repetitive criminal. I'm fortunate in that the people that I've worked with over the years, those inmates have been screened, and they appreciate, and they respond to my, my training and my helping them. So I think that's probably all I need to say. I was actually unexpectedly called up here. I didn't mean to sign the sheet, but I'm glad I did. Grateful for the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you.
I'm gonna take a guess at it. Is it Aaron?
Darren, actually.
Okay, Darren.
Yeah, Darren Smith. I am a citizen of Watcom County, but I also represent the men and women who don the uniform every day in that facility. And to be honest with you, I don't know how many people have outside of being incarcerated or working there have actually taken the time to be up on third, second, or on the main floor. The place is terrible. It has been for many years. There's, there's no question about that. And everything I've heard tonight seems, leads me to believe that there's really no dispute that there's a new facility that's, that is sorely needed. So why we keep pushing this down the road, or potentially kicking the can down the road further while we try to assess needs for restorative justice, which I don't agree that doesn't need to happen at some point. We need to have it in conjunction with what we already have going. But that doesn't mean it needs to happen at the expense of a much-needed new jail facility. As you heard from the testimony from some of the deputies tonight, they're good people. And through no fault of their own, they're in a position that puts them in unsafe conditions, just as the people who reside in the jail are in unsafe conditions as well. None of us dispute that. But it seems to become less and less of a priority as we continue to debate and discuss it. Why do we keep doing that? Let's put this on the ballot, let the voters decide what's gonna happen. I personally support the jail, not just because I represent the members, my, our members that work there, but also because I realize that we're not gonna solve this issue overnight. It's gonna take time. It's taken time everywhere it's been done in the world. So why would we stop just ad hoc, just get rid of whatever it is we're doing now and try and go down a different path? That doesn't make any sense to me. We're gonna need to do both. So let's build this facility. Let's get it done. There's no sense in waiting any longer. Frankly, I'm tired of hearing the debate over it. Thank you.
The last person that signed up, this is even harder to read. It looks like M-E-R is the first three, do you? Okay, I'll let you.
There's another sheet back there.
What a signature, you cat.
I just sort of scrolled it in there last minute. My name's Matthew Goggins. I'm from Bellingham. As far as the ballot measure is concerned, I agree with the woman who spoke earlier. I haven't met her before, but I think she said her name was Mary Kay Robinson. She was very eloquent, and just summarized what you already know about the jail being necessary to replace it. But, so I'd just like to make a couple of points in response to some of the commentaries that I've heard this evening. The gentleman who said he read the story about rural counties, you know, outsourcing their jails and making profit centers out of them, I read that story too today. And it's, it's actually a very interesting story. If you can Google it and find it, you should read it. But the thing I took away from that story, and it's interesting how people with different points of view filter things differently, is that the incarceration rate in Watcom County is about sixty, it's actually less than sixty percent of the incarceration rate in similarly situated counties, you know, rural, semi-rural counties. So that tells me that, a couple of things. First of all, that the sheriff deputies and the Bellingham Police Department are already highly-trained professionals who do know how to de-escalate situations and keep people from getting arrested in the first place. And we need to squeeze that more, obviously, because we wanna keep as many people out of jail as we can. But there might be diminishing returns here if you look at our rate of incarceration compared to other semi-rural counties. And it also tells me that the current plan is very responsible and prudent, that, you know, we can all hope and pray that, you know, with alternatives to incarceration, we can reduce that per capita rate even more. But until that actually happens, I mean, we can't assume that Watcom County, which is already a very enlightened and humane place in many ways, and I speak from firsthand experience with people who've dealt with the police and with the deputies, that we can't just assume that we're gonna squeeze even more out of that. I mean, maybe five or ten percent, but certainly not enough to half the population that some of the activists here tonight are hopeful for. And I also just like to thank the counsel for dealing with this finally after how many years, like almost twenty years. We're finally gonna get a ballot measure. And I guess one last point to the activists who are concerned about, about social justice
and treating people right with mental health and drug issues, is that no one's imposing
this. This is gonna be put up to a vote of the people. We're gonna have a vigorous debate about this, and we'll let the people decide. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Wild. I have been a resident of Watcom County for fifteen years now. And we live just slightly outside of the border of Bellingham, in the Geneva neighborhood. I wanna start by saying we need a new jail. There's no question about that. And, but I'm just not willing to build something for the sake of building something. I don't agree with the size, and I don't agree with the location. I urge you not to be swayed by emotional calls to action. For example, the mayor of Ferndale waved around these, this language around dangerous people as if there's hordes of machete and gun-wielding crazies out there. I remember when we had all those complaints about the folks who were hanging out on the railroad, and Chief Carroll's response was, "Bellingham does not know what a crime problem is." One woman testified to five percent on either end, five percent that are just never gonna respond, and five percent, you're gonna see them once in your court and they'll never be back again. Ninety percent can be helped with rehabilitation. I understand and agree with the workers that the work involves very dangerous people. Five percent can loom very large when they're trying to kill you. I understand that, okay? But we still need to look at this in terms of the numbers and what needs to happen to help take care of all of the folks, not just focusing on that five percent. If we have three hundred and thirty people in the jail on June seventh, as, I'm sorry, I've done a blank on Wendy's last name. Thank you. Five percent is sixteen point five people, seventeen people. And we're looking at four hundred and forty or four hundred and ninety-two beds. I don't want Watcom County to become a prison industry, industry county. That's one point. Why would you pay for a study and then move without the information? Crime is going down. Even our county attorney has said that crime is definitely going down here and everywhere across the United States. Other jurisdictions are changing how they're handling arrestees. And just based on common sense, it doesn't make sense to have something out in the county. You're gonna put bus line out to the county, and then as soon as there's an economic downturn, guess what the first bus line that's gonna be that gets cut? I believe you should tear down the one we have and rebuild it. Hopefully have, find somebody who's gonna build a jail that doesn't fall down in twenty years. I just believe this is morally wrong. I don't wanna live in a county where one of the top industries is a prison complex. We need to look to the future, which involves innovative ideas that reduce the jail population instead of incarcerating people, which every study has shown only creates a downward spiral of hopelessness and further crime. The images from It's a Wonderful Life comes to mind. We have the same stark choices here. We can have a family-oriented society that provides services that create good, productive, contributing members of society. Please build a jail for ninety percent of the people. Thank you.
Larry, Keith, and then Patrick Allesey?
Hi, Larry Hildes. You just heard from my wife. We live in the Geneva neighborhood just outside the city limit. I'm a civil rights attorney. I deal a fair amount with jails and with the criminal justice system. And I have been in this jail. I have visited people there. I have attended court in the basement there. There are serious problems. There is no question that that jail is in terrible shape. It should never have been built the way it was. And I don't necessarily wanna hand those people the blocks to build a new one that falls apart in twenty years. And a lot of the problems in the jail, I'm sorry to the Sheriff's Office, are not the facility, they are the management. For example, we have had two clients who came to us with, who were HIV-positive because their AIDS medications were withheld from them by the jail for the, for the time that they were in there. Fortunately, they're both still alive. It didn't necessarily have to be so. They were both in on nonviolent thirty-year-old warrants. There is no death penalty for that, and the jail was willing to make one. I got locked in a, in a visiting room once for half an hour plus after I was done meeting with my client. The, the phone didn't work, which is, is probably an electronics problem. I pulled out my cellphone. I called a friend, and it took the friend half an hour to convince the desk officer that I was really there because I hadn't bothered to write it down at the desk when I checked in. They had not recorded that I was there. So we had to convince them. That's management. There are some real problems that will not be fixed by a new facility. As Karen said, the crime rate is going down, has been going down for years, has gone down all through Bush I, Clinton, W, Obama, and now. And it keeps going down. Why are we building a facility for projections that are larger and assuming that because the population is gonna grow by this inflated amount that we use, that of course the incarceration rate is gonna grow? There's a plan. Come retire to Watcom County and live in the jail. I mean, this is ridiculous. This is not a philosophical discussion of what the numbers are. As Dean Tucker mentioned earlier, you build the facility, you will fill the facility. If you build a smaller jail, you make do with a smaller jail. We have the alternatives. Don't listen to emotional appeals that mommy's not gonna come home because of an earthquake. Build something at the size we have now, in the place we have now. Don't honor the boondoggle that bought us this land in the first place. Thank you, Pete Cremmon. Or have another election where Jack Laus gets to break the law and supply literature at the taxpayers' expense to convince people of the jail. Wait for the studies. Do this right. Build what we need, not something we can expand into and the Sheriff's Office can play with. And keep the mental health beds out of the jail. None of these things are unreasonable for rocket scientists.
Keith, and then Patrick, and then Caleb Erickson?
Hi, my name is Keith Frederickson, and I live in Happy Valley. Boy, I don't know how to follow that. But I'm, I'm mad. I'm incensed. I'm a voter, and I work in the, I'm an activist in the area of voter rights and getting money out of elections. And we voted on this two years ago. I voted against the jail, and I'm, I voted with the majority on that opinion. And I feel like we, the voters, are not And I feel like we, the voters, are not being listened to. People have given up on voting, a lot of people don't vote because they feel that their vote doesn't count. And in this case, their vote isn't being listened to. We've been through this, don't put it on the ballot again. This is just a watered down version of the same proposal that they think will pass this time. And there's a lot of people out there that are going to fight against it and I'm going to be one of them. Um, if you're looking for, if you're waiting for that Vera report, you should. Here's a little taste of what it might contain. This is another report they put out recently, June. Uh, Out of Sight, The Growth of Jails in Rural America. One of the things I, I found out in my research, what little research I've done, this is not my field, but, uh, urban areas are reducing their jail beds and successfully reducing crime rates at the same time. New York City's reduced its jail beds by 55% since 1996. And rates, crime rates are going down there. I'm, I'm incensed because we're a nation that is a world leader in two big things that we shouldn't be leaders in. The amount of money we spend on the military and the number of people we incarcerate, greater even than Russia. This is, this is not, this is more than just an embarrassment. And, and this is why I voted against it. If you want to know why, what the voters meant when they said no, ask the voters. And I'm, I'm, I took the time out this evening to come and tell you what I meant when I voted no. The Vera, this Vera report identifies two major drivers in incarceration. And it's, um, the number of people held in pre-trial detention, people who haven't even been proven guilty, and, uh, the number of people, uh, who are held for another authority. And I don't want Wachem County to become a holding cell for, a profit center for other counties, other jurisdictions. Uh, if you build a huge jail, that's what you're going to get. And I don't want that to happen and I'll vote against it again. Thank you.
Patrick, Caleb, and then Robert Lieb, or Lieb?
Patrick Alasy, 4825 Alderson Road, Birch Bay. I want to say I really appreciated people's testimony on this. Now, I did write down a couple of things, that's all I have. One thing that I had mentioned before was make this a property tax to pay. A sales tax is sort of like, oh, we'll get somebody else to pay for a jail. Maybe, maybe the Canadians will. Of course, they'll have to go to jail in B.C. Make it a property tax. After all, we have law enforcement to protect property. Oh, you're going to say they protect people too. Well, I've told you other, on any occasions, your most important piece of property is your body. We just can't tax it yet. So, I like the idea of a jail closer to Bellingham because you're going to save money in the long run by running people around. Now, how big the jail should be, I don't know. The other thing I have written down here is blood in the water. I'm halfway through the book. It's a wonderful book. I'm just eating it slowly. It's about the prison riot in Buffalo, or in Attica, New York. The first guard that was killed there was a boyfriend, hood friend of mine. My uncle was a guard there, not at the time of the riots. One thing I learned from him was some people just like to be in jail. They need an institution. So maybe we have people that need some semi-institutions just to help take care of them. Hey, read the book, it's a great read.
Caleb, and then Robert.
Hello, I'm Caleb Erickson, I'm a resident of Linden.
Get closer.
Sorry, I'm a little tall. Uh, Caleb Erickson, I'm a resident of Linden. I've lived in Wachem County for 35 years or so. And I'm also, uh, employed with the sheriff's office for about 12 years now. It's been a difficult journey, um, learning firsthand what it means to be inside a facility where you deal with the things you deal with, you see the things that you see. You care deeply for the individuals, both that you work with and that we are there to protect in the community and, um, the people that we are protecting from themselves. And I believe you will, um, have gotten it out of my presentation, uh, a couple of weeks ago, that I care deeply for, uh, these issues. Um, as you also may know, I work in the Work Center and I believe one of the items on the agenda tonight is talk about whether we would continue to operate the Work Center um, and use it as a viable facility. Um, it was never intended for that. I don't believe many of you were, um, involved in the decision-making process that led us to have the Work Center, but it is too small. It is, um, shaped, uh, in such a way that is not effective. I mentioned before that we need more bed space to properly house good alternatives to, uh, full incarceration. Our staff does an absolutely outstanding job and I want to thank them for coming up and saying the things that they said tonight. Um, because they do an outstanding job of treating people with dignity, treating people as individuals, caring for them specifically, and, uh, working with them to find things that keep them from coming back to the facility. And, um, we need more space in a facility to do, uh, the alternative's job correctly. Additionally, we need more programming space, space to have classes, um, classes on vocation, talking about how to work your way back into the community, having mock job interviews, talking about people where, where people are going to live, um, and, and deal with the issues, the real life issues that they have to face when they ultimately get out of our facility. So we need the, we need the space to accommodate those types of programs and neither one of our facilities, um, has that option. And, um, I just want to thank you for considering these issues.
Thirty seconds, please.
And also, uh, I would like to ask that you consider putting this to the voters again, uh, for their ultimate say on this issue. Thank you.
Robert, and that's the end of the sign up. So anyone else that would like to speak, would you please come on down now?
Hello. Uh, Robert Lieb, Wachem County resident for 27 years. I was the father of a mentally ill son who was locked up in this jail on a domestic dispute and later went on to die by suicide. Fact, Mr. Lous wants to add what he calls a jail tax to the ballot. By all accounts, the definition of what he's asking for is a prison, not a jail. Published reports state that the average local stay, or jail stay is 22 days. The average stay is 22 days, then why are we trying to build a prison? At the last council meeting, it became evident that you really do not know what the needs assessment is and just how many beds are really needed. A comment was made at the last meeting that you are motionless. Mr. Lous wants to keep tweaking the bed count to that magic number that he thinks will pass so that he can get that new prison in motion and then the dollars will roll. No discussions about reforms to the prosecutors or judges to truly change the system that incarcerates so many people needlessly and holds them on bail that they cannot afford. No money to divert the people who simply do not belong there. No plans, nothing. This plan of Mr. Lous has no real business case or makes any logical sense except as a plan to help grow the incarceration industry and fund more outside businesses with our tax dollars. Bellingham Council member Dan Hamel summed up the melee. The overall fundamental problem with this is that it, is that we are being asked to do our work out of order. We are out of order and in isolation of mitigating facts in one of the most costly, important decisions in the county's history. They're not being asked to consider reforms and improvements to our local criminal justice system in determining the size, location, and the cost of the jail. In fact, those items aren't even up for discussion, he said. Decision-makers, including voters, need to have data and information. We do not have that benefit at all. The Vera Institute will be presenting their report to you on July 11th. Why would you try to push this onto the ballot prior to reading their report? You have no idea what the means assessment really is, yet you're allowing Mr. Lous to guide you down the path of mass incarceration. You need to deal with the facts when making this decision. How many people are in jail awaiting trial and are too poor to bail out? How many people are mentally ill? How many people are there just as fillers to prove to the public there, that there is an overcrowding issue? If Mr. Lous is bullying you to push this through, then you need to resist so that you make the correct decision because we will be forced to battle the tax to the bitter end to change the way the mentally ill and marginalized people are treated.
Thirty seconds, please.
By continuing to try to bring the jail tax back to the voters for the second time, you are just delaying the upgrades to the current jail to make it a humane facility for the occupants and the staff. This is your responsibility and by continuing the tax debate, you are leaving that facility to ruin and shame on you for that. Beware, business owners are finding out that, that what is really going on here and we are not happy. WachemCountyJail.com is now live and we will be publishing all of what really goes on in this county for the world to see.
Time.
If we need to defeat another jail tax ballot, just open your eyes to what is really going on in this county, then so be it. Fix the system and stop jailing marginalized systems of the community. Turn the community into something we can all be proud to call home. Thank you.
Um, Wendy Harris. Um, this is an issue I haven't spoken to before and I don't know a lot of the nuances, the details that a lot of people here do, so, um, I come here sort of with a beginner's mind. Um, the one thing that really jumped out at me, that made me want to speak tonight, was my concerns about process. Um, there's just something very unsavory about the process that's occurring. Something's very wrong when we decide that we're going to fund, um, a sales tax and then the next hearing regards what size the jail's going to be or how many beds there's going to be. Um, something's just not right with that process. And I know one thing, if we're going to be building, um, a new facility, it's really important that we plan it well. And planning's hard and it takes a long time and it's a lot of work. And so I sat here and listened to people and I heard the opponents really making some very cogent, clear, logical arguments. And then I heard the proponents come in and make a lot of emotional, um, um, arguments that sort of mucked things up. And, uh, there were a lot of assertions by proponents that they knew how many beds were needed and they knew, you know, without any information, they knew. And that really concerned me. I don't understand how you can really make a good decision without the information from experts, from people who are consultants. Um, I was a sociology major in college. And so I know that there's, um, research and analysis that goes into this and it appears that that hasn't come forward. So I can't tell you what you should do because nobody really knows at this point. So I'm just asking you, please, to follow the proper process and allow it to take its time and get the answers you need so we can make the right decisions and so that we won't be subject to emotional manipulation. Thank you.
Dan McShane, 1451 Grant Street, Bellingham. Uh, about two years ago, I chose to be opposed to the jail tax at that time. And it was not an easy decision because I used to be on the county council, as you know. I've lived in Wachem County 35 years now, I realized I can, I have a big number to throw out there. But, um, at that time, if you go back 15 years ago or even 20 years ago, there was already a decision that was in the works, like a locomotive coming down the train tracks with 100 carloads of coal behind it. And that was that the existing jail needed to be replaced. It was in terrible condition. And so we had this decision and that train started rolling 20 years ago. That was my introduction to the jail situation then. And in that 20-year period, we've done very little to fix up the existing facility. And what I had hoped was that at this point, after two years ago though, being opposed to the jail and reaching that decision and not really wanting to be, not opposed to the jail, but opposed to the jail tax as it was structured and where we were heading with that tax, I was really hoping that two years from now, I'd be standing in front of you saying, I'm in favor of this tax. I think it should move forward. I haven't seen enough change or assurances that the broad spectrum of programs that Wachem County, the city of Bellingham are doing really well now are going to be funded into the future. And that this tax will be directed into a facility and an operation that will undermine the other aspects of the broad spectrum of criminal justice. And I haven't seen that change, uh, and so I can't be in favor of it yet. I'd like to be, but we just haven't moved in the direction or the assurances. We're still kind of locked into an idea that started rolling down the track just 20 years ago and needs to be stepping back. And unfortunately, you guys are the ones that are having to step in front of that train or being asked to. And that's not an easy thing to do, particularly when you're not in the administration.
Thirty seconds, please.
And it's hard, I know, when wanting to work with an administration, they're good people, they're doing good work, they're trying their best to say, you know, we need to do this differently. So I wish you well in that decision. But at the same time, I'd just like to pass the message on for someone who wanted to support a jail tax, um, I haven't seen the change that would convince me that I should support it this time either. Thank you.
I'm Kristin Hannah.
Get a little closer to the mic, please.
Thanks. I'm Kristin Hannah, uh, Bellingham resident. And, um, I was here last year to address you about this time. And, uh, I was, I expressed concern that I even had to be here to ask you, why are you considering the jail again, just after the voters said no? And I think I'm, I'm in a better position now to, uh, appreciate the decision that you are, are making. I think that if you make a decision to put it before the taxpayers, the voters, remember that you are the only branch in the government that represents the people. The only branch. You're the, you represent all of us, um, and the people who aren't here. You're voted for. And this branch of government is so important that, um, it, we often forget. You're, you're paid, what, $20,000 a year? I think I was somebody else doing math earlier. That equals what, four people, to pay for four people in jail for the year? That's what all of you are paying. Four or five more, maybe you can double your, your salary. It's a thankless job. You really have a lot of power without a lot of the, uh, the empowerment. And I wanted to just remind you, you are all stewards of the public's trust. And if you put it out, if you put a measure out there to be voted on, I, it's, at least for me as a voter all these years, I've always believed that if, if the legislature is going to ask me to vote on something, that they're already supporting it. And like the previous speaker, I, I want something that's supportable. But this is, just seems so, uh, compromised, wishy-washy, and hurried. There's no need to hurry, especially for $20,000 a year. I mean, really, put, if you were being paid $100,000 a year,
Thirty seconds, please.
I would, maybe ask yourself, would you be thinking about this so seriously, not so seriously? I think you would be thinking about it a lot harder. So I want you to consider yourselves the most important ones in, in our government right now. You are, you represent the people and we all trust you. So make a wise choice and I don't envy you. Thank you.
My name is Christina and I live in Bellingham. And this is my first time ever coming to one of these meetings. I've only watched them on, uh, YouTube channels after they've happened. And I'm kind of, um, upset about the way that we about the way that we've been treating this whole situation. I'm probably one of the youngest people in this room, and it just, it scares me to think that our future and the future of Bellingham and Wachem County is going to potentially increase the size of the jail, betting on the fact that people are going to fail, that we should fill this jail. I personally think that instead of doing that, we need to be focusing on helping people improve their lives, and helping them stay away from that system, and if we focus our energy on building a bigger jail, we're not going to achieve that goal. And it just, I really don't support this jail, and I don't support building a bigger jail by any means. And I've, I've never voted before, it's just someone said, you know, people think their vote doesn't matter, and that's something that I have thought in the past, and this is definitely an issue that has come to light for me, that yes, I will be voting, and I will be encouraging other people to be voting, should it come to ballot, that this should not be happening. I think that we should feel ashamed of how the current jail situation is, because if it is so inhumane and so horrible in there, yet we're putting inmates and people working in the jail, in that building, that I don't know why we should trust the decision to build a bigger one, you know, thirty-five years from now, are we going to have to build again? And is it going to be twice the size? Is it going to be a thousand beds thirty-five years from now? That's not the direction we should push for this county. We really, we really should be pushing to helping people, and helping this county be something that we can be proud of, and proud to live in, so. And a bigger jail with people failing is just not something we should look for, in my opinion, so, thanks.
Good evening, my name is Jamie Douglas. I came in late to this session because I was over at the city town hall, which was dealing with affordable housing and homelessness. It was brought up at that meeting, and it was really unfortunate that these two events were happening at the same time, because as it was pointed out at the town hall, the subjects are related, because as you have people who are homeless, they often wind up in our jails. And as they get out, then they go back to being homeless. I think that one of the things you should consider, because I'm not an expert on jails or of, of this type of thing, but I spent over thirty years working for the voting company, dealing with large systemic problems. And what I recognize here is that you really don't have a problem about where to put a jail, or how big a jail to build. You have a much bigger systemic problem in terms of how are we going to deal with public safety, with justice, and with equality for everybody who lives in the county. And that's the big issue that's being tried to be addressed here. The people who are tugging back and forth on this issue about bed sizes or jail locations are missing or skirting around this larger systemic problem. The one thing that I know from my career, looking at systemic problems, is they don't get solved by incremental moves. You need to actually, I think, step back and look at the larger issue about how are we going to deal with this? That's the only way that you're going to be able to go down and look at what's the right type of facility, how big it should be, and what it should provide. Because incarceration and, and, you know, justice in the county, that's really the issue that I think a lot of people are trying to speak to, and maybe not really elevating the problem to that level. So I, I really feel for you guys, because being asked to solve this small question of how big a facility and where to locate it, sounds like such a simple problem.
Thirty seconds, please.
But that's because that's the tip of this iceberg with this larger systemic issue that has to be addressed. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jesse Warland. I've been a resident ever since I was born, I'm pretty young. This is my second city council meeting that I've attended, and my, I, I can't address the whole problem, and I, I don't claim that I could speak about it thoroughly, but I'm just curious as to where the burden of this proposal is falling. I'm a window washer, it's pretty hard manual labor, I work eight to ten hours a day, and I hear about the sales tax, which won't really affect people who make average amounts of money, but I feel like it's really going to disproportionately fall on people who don't get paid as much. And my coworkers, a few of them have, the, the system of incarceration for nonviolent crimes has really affected them, and they have had trouble finding decent employment. So I, I'm just curious as to why we are pushing for another jail that would, and seeking for the vote of people to just dig our own hole deeper. I, I'm not very good at speaking, so I'm kind of nervous, but I'm just curious as to why the average person would vote for this. Thank you.
Hello, I also came from the housing meeting, and I want to thank you all for your time and your willingness to engage the public on this question. I want to speak to the, to the issue. Oh, my name is Lindsay McDonald, I've lived in Wach, in Bellingham for thirty years. We're in the midst of an opioid epidemic, and of massive proportions, which appears to be growing locally and nationally. Opioid addiction is an addiction where the user will go into withdrawal without their opioid fix each day, once they're in the addiction state. We have very few resources for treatment of people with opioid addiction in our community. I have an opioid addict in my family, who is now on the street trying to buy their fix every day, and I tried to call today to find a detox facility in Seattle. There's one in Seattle that will take Medicaid, okay? And most, most addicts end up needing Medicaid, because their lives spiral into destructive patterns. The addicts among us need treatment, they need their illness to be treated as a health problem, a social and emotional problem, and not criminalized. I've heard the current director of the jail say that a great proportion of the inmates are there for mental health and drug, drug problems. So you hear, you've heard what I feel about the drug problems, the addicted among us who are husbands, fathers, brothers, sisters, uncles, aunts, and our children, need treatment and holistic approach to this illness, which is tearing our nation apart. So that's how I feel about the drug issue. Now, mental health, we know that mental health services have been cut back, and that in many ways, our jails are the places where people get their mental health support, often a compassionate support they can't find anywhere else. So if we create this jail in Ferndale that has all these beds, and then we employ all these people to lock up, guard, transport, and sell cigarettes to, and feed our incarcerated family members who happen to be drug addicts or have mental health problems, then if we ever want to change it, we're going to have people down here saying, "Don't take away my job! If I lose my, my jail guard job, I won't be able to send my kids to college." And then, "Oh, no, no, we can't touch those jail guard jobs that we created, because we decided to lock up our addicted family members and our mentally unhealthy community members." I mean, come on, this is ridiculous. If we're going to put money into something, we need treatment facilities, we need mental health facilities, and we need caseworkers for these unfortunate individuals who, whose lives are being destroyed. And I'll tell you that for every addict that goes down, there's a family that goes down, because I've lived it. You cannot have an addict...
Thirty seconds, please.
...without your family having severe money problems, emotional problems, like, it's sad, okay? So I just want to say, drugs, mental health, let's not lock them up, let's do something positive for them, and for the, for those of us that are their family members. Thank you.
So anyone else would like to speak to us on this? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, that's a good idea. The council's going to take, let's make it a ten-minute break, be back at nine-thirty. The council's gonna take, uh, let's make it a ten-minute break, be back at nine-thirty.
Okay, we are back in session.
I'm gonna let council respond after, you know, hearing from the public. And by the way, thank you all very much for coming out tonight. We really appreciate your comments and it's a great to see democracy in action. So council, we'll turn it over to you.
Did Mr. Lazz want to make his speech?
Nope.
No.
I will call on him when it's time.
Oh, okay.
Did you want to go first?
No, no, it's one, it's one.
Okay. Who would like to go?
I'll go first.
Mr. Mann.
All right. So yeah, once again, thanks to everyone who showed up and gave us some feedback. And I, I, we heard one point a few times that I found somewhat interesting about, oh, let the people vote on it already. You've been dragging your feet, et cetera. And I just really feel it's important to remind you that this was on the ballot already two years ago. And it did go to the people and the people did not vote for it. It failed. And here we are again with substantially the same proposal. It's slightly, slightly smaller and the money is slightly rearranged. But it's the same big jail in the same location at the same exorbitant price tag. And so I don't support it. I haven't supported it for a long time. And the reason is because, uh, it was brought up, why, why stop this progress that we're making towards the jail? Well, one fact that I've noticed is now that we've had this crisis or this shortage of beds in a, in a substandard facility, we have finally, finally, as a community tackled the issue of diversions and alternatives. And we've got people going to other jails. We've got electronic home monitoring in the city of Bellingham. We are making real progress in reducing the incarceration rate. And we're seeing those trends go down nationally as well as locally. So to extrapolate a, a population going forward and incarceration rate going forward, to get this number of a jail, to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on, makes no sense to me. And so I'm not gonna vote to introduce the ballot measure tonight. I'm not, I don't want to ask the people to vote on the same thing again. I want to wait till we have more information. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Other council members? Ms. Brenner?
I don't want to say much because I want to say a whole lot at some point. And, you know, coming after Ken, nae, 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 nae. Um, I think there was so much said by so many people from their hearts. And, um, I, I want to be sure that, actually, there's someone in particular I really want to talk to because she knows a lot about, more about the law and about, um, the, um, defense, defense part of it. And I really want to get more information on that. But, um, I'm optimistic and I'm hoping, you know, what I want to see is us having a safe space where people, if they need to be incarcerated, they're in a safe space. And people with mental illness especially because, as I've said many times, I'm bipolar and I've gone through a whole lot of the same things people have talked about with their family members. And I would never support anything that doesn't put that in the forefront. And that's all I'm gonna say for now.
Mr. Sedu.
Yes, I think, uh, I appreciate everybody coming out and giving their input. I mean, we were supposed to talk about sizing the jail. But I think that what we heard is, is the real feelings from people. And that's the most important thing. And people are listening at home. Also, uh, one of the thing was said that we want to know the facts. And, uh, and I will just challenge you with facts. And, and they are not necessarily for, or they are not necessarily against. The facts are facts. First thing is, there was something said about cause and effect. What we are trying to do as a society, that we are finding solutions because we are building a jail. The mental health problem, the drug abuse, behavioral health issues, homelessness. We don't have a healthcare system which looks after these things. And now we are looking that, oh, since we are building a jail, let jail solve these problems. I mean, that's what we are seeking because when we abolished mental institutions or this whole system, which was totally pathetic, we never came up with a new system. We thought, just eliminate those institutions, problem gone away. It took twenty years and problem is showing up and we have no solution. So that is a fact. People say, don't arrest people. Are we ready for community incarceration means, are there people willing to volunteer? That if this person has a A, B, C problem, I will host them at my home for a month, for a week. We're not ready for that because there, there, something has to be done. Just saying, go, go do something, it's not gonna get done. Somebody has to do it. Next thing, we must look into, what is our system? How the jail sentences, guard lines are? How the mandates are? How we handle violent crimes? Bail systems? Prosecutors' powers? All those decision-making, they're not in the hands of the county. They're run by state supreme court and some are federal. So we should keep that in mind. The other part is, somebody said about the incarceration rate in United States. We have five times more lawyers. We have thirty years of drug war going on, spent billions of dollars. And we have more people incarcerated about drugs, either carrying them or selling them, than any other pers, uh, country in the world. So this is something we created. We created because we vote for people who go and do that. We cannot just abdicate our responsibility as voters and say, oh, somebody out there doing it. We elect them every time. And they go do that, they come back and we re-elect them again, go do more of it. Because it's, this is not a session to come in and take all your emotions out and feel better and go home. It's, it's a real problem. Now, I want to talk about this jail. I'm really not opposed to making a one jail instead of the current two jails and make a new jail. Let's talk about size. There has been words said about mega jail. Does fifty beds make something a mega jail or just the right size? I think that if, if I look at it, I started with, just simple math, you all can do that. If, do you think three hundred and fifty beds is a good size of the jail, new jail? It's not a mega jail. You take three hundred and fifty divided by point eight-five, that's fifteen percent. And plus add thirty-six beds, which are mental health and everything. The total comes to four hundred and forty-eight. If you take four hundred beds, do the same math, eighty-five percent capacity and thirty-six beds, it comes to five hundred and six beds. So let's, let's be realistic about it, you know? We should, this is not difficult. You can give somebody eight hundred thousand dollars, which we did, two, three year, three years ago. So you spent, you, we spent, your county council spent eight hundred thousand dollars to get a number from somebody. And the number they gave, maybe between five to seven hundred. I think we could do a better job. If five of us sit down and we can come up with a number, which will be as good as anybody because you're projecting thirty years from today, you cannot come up with a number, oh, this is the right number. Is a three seventy-eight is a good number? Or four seventy-eight is a good number? Nobody knows that. So, and we, we, we are talking about that. The next thing is location. I think I just should, I, I, I personally feel that this decision was made by previous council. There was a public input, all the process went through. And that's why, that's how this property got bought. But I'll tell you, when, in March twenty fifteen, when I came on to the council, I was very new. And jail was the biggest issue in front of the council. And, and I started reading and everything. I came up with a plan, which I shared with a few people and I'll share with you today. That if we take the Prospect Street and put a roof over Prospect Street, first twenty feet, and build a four-story building for the jail. And if we do the same on the Lottie Street and roof over the Lottie Street and take the county property on the other side and build a four-story building there. Four-story building is not a high-rise jail. And if we do that, I can fit the same square feet of the other jail with this jail. But I was told that water is under the bridge, it's too late to come up with the new, eh, new design and everything. But I'm saying that the biggest thing was that we were looking at eleven-story jail, comparing it to the flat jail or a tall jail. Four-story jail is not a tall jail, that which is difficult to manage. It, it's, it's just reasonable. Okay, let's talk about the point-two percent tax. I did, I got some information from the administration, calculated. Point-two percent tax, the public will be paying three hundred and fifty-five million dollars in thirty years. Three hundred and fifty-five million dollars will be taxed. The jail bond will cost only two hundred and two million dollars. The county will get fifty-five million dollars extra. And all the cities combined will get ninety-six million dollars extra. Now, we were talking about the issues, how to fund the homelessness and, and, and the drug problem and, and, and the mental health. Are we willing, as citizens, you guys make that decision, not us five, five, seven people here? Are you willing to pay three hundred and fifty-five million dollars and say, let's put two hundred million dollars worth of the jail and put the hundred and fifty million dollar extra you are paying towards those programs? Do you want to do that? If I calculate at hundred and ten million dollars and five hundred beds, it costs two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per bed. Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per bed. That's the kind of jail we are building. Let's talk about one more thing. Point-one percent corrections tax, which was put on two thousand and eight. Now, that tax was put on somehow, all the money comes to the county. But this new tax we are putting on, we, county gets sixty percent and other cities get forty percent. And then out of the forty percent they get, they pay towards the capital cost. Now, why can't we do again a tax which all the money comes to the county? And we should pay the bond off as soon as possible and then have a sunset clause. We, how can we here bind the council twenty years from today and the executive and the administration that this tax will continue forever? I don't think this is fair. Let the citizens, voters at that time, we should pay off the jail. If we decide to build it, let them decide they want to continue. Let that council put it on the ballot again. Do we want to continue this tax or not? We cannot, I, I don't think it's fair that we should do that. Now, uh, one more thing. County budget, uh, two more things. We just have EMS levy. And EMS levy will raise five, six million dollars. It frees up three and a half million dollars from our general fund, which we want to use it for some kind of capital fund. This building needs fixing. There are other capital projects, we calculated, a hundred million dollars worth of projects. Capital projects over next twenty years, the county needs to, to do. So that's an issue. Our flood control fund has a shortage of money. We need to do that, right? So all these issues are in front of the county council and in front of you because we don't write checks, we just come to you and ask you to pay for it. So just making statements, we do need a jail, I can tell you that. This is a life sentence to the people who work there, not person who comes there for two months and leaves. There are people who work there for next, last ten, twelve, fifteen years. And they will be working there for another twenty years. It's, it's not something bad to give a nice working place for the people who are, who serve and protect us. We should not forget that, that, that's, that's also important. I'll just stop here, I have a few more things, but I don't want to take too much time. But these are all the facts, you should consider everything. Just saying, don't arrest people, does not solve the problem.
Mr. Brown?
Apparently I have to speak.
Okay.
You don't have to. So let, let me start by saying, after listening to everybody tonight and all the other evenings and the emails and so forth, let me start by what I think everybody does agree on, irrespective of where you are in the spectrum of this. I think everybody agrees that the current jail needs to be fixed. I think everybody agrees that they want to reduce the number of people that are actually incarcerated. I think everybody agrees that they want help available for people with mental health, mental health needs that will accept it. And they want help available for people with substance abuse needs that will accept it. I think everybody wants a humane jail system that does not add to the stress to the inmates because I have to imagine that being in jail is stressful. And that if you put someone in an inhumane environment and you put stress on them, there is a reasonable chance they're gonna commit offenses as they act out and respond to that, that stress. They're gonna commit those offenses against other inmates or other staff. And those offenses will add to their charges and ultimately add to their jail time. I think we agree that we want to separate youth from hardened adult sex offenders. I think we agree we want to separate youth and first-timers from habitual offenders. We don't want them teaching them how to be criminals. I think we want offenders to have access to re-entry skill, skills classes. I think we want offenders to have access to reentry skill, skills classes before they leave, if appropriate. I think we want them to have access to AA and NA meetings, if they want them. I think we want them to have adequate space for family visitation and sufficient space to allow that to occur on a frequent basis, as I understand it. If you're lucky, you get one hour a week at the moment. I think we want mental health beds. I think we want substance abuse beds. I think everyone, everyone in this room said to the, to, in one way or another, they wanted that. The problem is, if we do nothing in terms of replacing the existing jail, then none of those things will happen. If we do nothing more on the, we, we, we need to do more on the outside of the jail system. We need to do more before arrest. We need to do more after arrest to keep people out of the jail. I absolutely agree with that. I absolutely support that. And I will do everything I can on the council to encourage that. But if we do nothing about what happens on the inside, we are denying inmates access to humane conditions. We're denying inmates access to everything I just listed before. Mental health beds, uh, skills classes, AA and NA meetings, family visitations, just the security of knowing that you're a kid who who's, you've committed something just on the wrong side of eighteen, and you're scared out of your mind and you're in a cell. Just the fact that that kid has the right to wake up in the morning without being terrorized during the night. If we, if we do nothing, then we have to wait until the state government changes the laws or provides the funding that will fundamentally move the needle on the incarceration rates. Last week, I I I published this, did Mr. Longman, did this, did this end up on the website? Yeah. So I I put together a, a, a tool to, it's a spreadsheet. And it's specifically designed to take each of the major issues that affect jail incarceration rates. And then I put down on the side of it, based on what I've been told, as to which ones are governed by state law, which ones are governed by a combination of state, federal, and local funding and decisions, which are just state and local, and which are only local issues. And the purpose of this was to say, okay, if we could change things, how much would we change things and how much would you change the incarceration rate? The interesting thing to me about the current proposal, and I'd stress, I want the number, I want our need to be less. I absolutely want our need to be less. But the current number, which was four seventy-six, if you run that at an eighty-five percent capacity rate, which is what is recommended nationally as to what the utilization rate for a jail should be, not a hundred percent, it should be eighty-five percent. So you can move people around. You can keep youth away from adults. You can keep sex offenders away from the general population. You can keep someone who's got TB away from someone who doesn't have TB. The, the, the utilization rate should be eighty-five percent. When you factor that in, it's about the, the, we're building at four seventy-six, we're accommodating a population that's about equal to the current jail. In fact, the difference in size is about eleven percent. So I hear everybody about the need. I just don't know how we make the system more humane without building a different facility that is large enough to accommodate health beds. It's large enough to accommodate programs. It's large enough to accommodate family visitation. I just don't know how we do that. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council? Mr. Wymer?
Yes, since everybody's y ever, and I'll join in. Um, you, you know, we heard a lot about mega jails this evening. And and I've been at this for twelve years now. And I think when we first started talking about this, that was accurate. Because the first proposal that came to us was a thousand-plus-bed jail. Then we pushed back on that and it was eight hundred. And then we pushed back on that and it was six hundred. And now we're down, you know, in the four hundreds. Um, when you do the math, I I I think where we're at now is getting close to the right-sized jail. Um, if you do the math, as of Monday, Wendy Jones, our jail administrator, said we had three hundred and thirty-four people in the jail. Um, that doesn't include the people that, uh, people are sending east of the mountains now, because they can't get them in our jail anymore. And that, from the city of Bellingham and the Lummi Nation and others, adds probably another ten or fifteen to that number. There's booking restrictions, so people can't get in the jails. There's a huge waiting list of people that the courts have said need to spend time in the jail, then they can't get in the jails. You add that number and you're probably adding ten more. So you're up to about three sixty right now of people that ought to be in the jail. If you add in that fifteen percent number Mr. Brown was just talking about, you're at four fifteen. So we're pretty close to the number right now of where the, the people, where we have demand right now. The reality is, as we've looked at costs for adding fifty beds one way or another, we are not going to send, save much construction costs in arguing about fifty beds, plus or minus. Now, I really want to hear from the Vera Institute before we make a final decision, because I'm hoping there will be some magic there. I'm assuming they can come to us and and bring to us some ideas for lowering that number. I think everybody on this council, I think everybody agrees that the, uh, the, the, the priority needs to be keeping people out of jail and preventing that. And we've done a lot of that. The other thing that annoys me is when people come up here and tell us we aren't doing anything. We're spending millions of dollars on housing people and prevention. We started the Incarceration Prevention Task Force. They've come up with ideas. Between the city and in the county, we spend almost as much on those programs people are talking about as we do on the jail. So we've moved that needle. And in the agreement, as you heard from the city of Bellingham, there's some commitments to continuing to move that. So I'm hoping the Vera Institute can tell us other things. The reality is that there's pressure that's going to push the jail in the other direction. I don't know if you've heard our new attorney general speak about how he wants to crim, recriminalize all kinds of things. The state legislature, every year, comes up with some new excuse to take crimes that used to send people to prison and decriminalize them just enough, so they're now sent to the county jail. So while the Vera Institute may save us X number of beds, there's other forces that may add that many beds back in. So here we are at four hundred. We're talking about a four-hundred-bed jail and, you know, I'm not seeing a whole lot. People talked about, what's the hurry? Well, Mr. Brown just talked about the hurry. We have deputies working in an insane, insane, unsafe place. We have nurses working in an unsafe place. And we have all those prisoners there. So I think there is a hurry to get a, a, a safe jail built. And people came up here and said, look at other places. They're really dropping their incarceration rate. Mississippi even has really reduced their rate much more than Watkin County is. Well, look where Mississippi started. They had a huge rate and they did some cherry picking. We started that years ago. So the rate people are comparing to, we've already reduced it. So comparing us to Mississippi is just silly. So, you know, I'm pretty close. I think the number's pretty close. We've really pushed from a thousand beds down to the four-hundred range. Want to hear from the Vera Institute. But I think we're pretty close to the right-sized jail. And, uh, you know, unless the Vera Institute really comes with some amazing information, I'm ready to ask the voters if they think we're close to.
And I totally agree with what Councilmember Wymer said about Vera. Vera is supposed to be here on the eleventh of July to present to the council in the afternoon. So I, I don't think it's wise to take any action on, on the ordinance until such time that we've heard from them. I am skeptical of the size. I think it needs to be smaller. I think if we do build a smaller jail, it challenges us to fund programs that will prevent incarceration. I think that's where we need to have our focus, is on prevention. So that's all I have to say. Mr. Executive, would you like to have a word?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, council members, and community. I'm not going to speak to the size of the jail, as that's been a, a work of the, all of the cities and the county administration to get it to you. I'd just like to say that, um, after the failure of the last ballot measure, the council asked the administration to take a look at our existing jail one more time. And with your approval, we contracted with Design to Last to take a look at it. That report was given to the council and to the community. As you remember, it said that we needed to do ten million dollars worth of work immediately to the facility. We could do upwards of another thirty million beyond that to a forty-million-dollar project. And at the end of the day, as Counselor Brown so eloquently stated, at the end of the day, we aren't going to have mental health space. We're not going to have the medical beds. We're not going to have the programming space. What we're going to have is, is a building that's much more safe and secure than what it is today. But we, with forty million dollars, is, is we aren't doing a remodel of it to change its function as we see it today. And I think that, and and of course, the last thing on their executive summary is, is that after you spend that forty million dollars, if you remember, they said, you still need a new jail. So at the end, uh, a, as a result of that, and I don't know if I have my timing quite right, but the council put together the jail planning work group. And with, working with the cities, our administration working with the cities is, is they're very keen to the fact that they would rather not have the county spend forty million dollars on our existing jail and at the end of the day, still need a new jail. Because the way our contracting works with this is they're on the hook for whatever portion of their usage that they have to make that happen also. But with that said, we are working with Design to Last as we speak. In the next sixty days, I would anticipate that we're going to be coming forward to the council for the approval of the first incremental contracts to do some work in our existing jail. As you may remember, I came up and said that I thought that we were going to take their ten million dollars and cut that back to about six million. We probably have to add another million and a half, maybe two million dollars to that, so we could contract ourselves with Yakima, because we're going to reduce the number of people, prisoners that we have during that period of time remodel. But we are, um, we are getting ready to go. And if this doesn't go on with the ballot measure, I would guess that we're going to continually, incrementally spending forty million dollars in it. But the community does have to realize that the, the initiatives that they would like us to take as it relates to the programming inside the facility probably are not going to get done to their satisfaction. I know they're not going to get done to my satisfaction. And it's one of the reasons that I've been as proactive as I can. Is it a perfect agreement? No, I think I've said that before. It's a, it's an agreement that is a compilation of a lot of work from a lot of different people and a lot of give and take. And the decision's ultimately yours, whether or not you want to put that on the ballot this year. And I'll leave that, leave that part of it up to you. There's one other topic that I'd like to just hit head on tonight. And and that is the property acquisition in La Bounty Road. We did have one or two people come up tonight and say that they felt that that was a conspiracy at, at, in, in terms of how we purchased that property, insinuating that I gamed the system for that purchase of that. And I've had a lot of people in my seventeen and a half years of public service that have, uh, that have hit me with different items that they don't care for. But I just want to let the community know that the purchase of that property in Ferndale was totally above board. It was totally vetted by our attorneys. And to have anything or any insu, insinuations that it was done improperly means that not only me would have to have something to do with it, but appraisers, attorneys, our DLR contractors, our environmental impact statement people. I mean, there's too many people involved in, in that particular process to make it anything more than what it is. That property appraised for about six million dollars, and that's what we bought it for. Uh, there's no, there was no gaming the system out there. And I just want the community to know that I stand by, uh, I stand by the process that we went through to get that. Obviously, we can debate whether or not it's the right decision or not. But when the lady came up here and spoke tonight, is, is, I want you to know, is, is that they can implement me, but by implicating that that process went wrong is, is implementing a lot of other good people besides me, because that process was a lot broader than me making a decision on behalf of Watkin County to purchase that property. So, um, there's fighting words on my end of it, because there's too many good people that have been involved in this to have people come up and say that there's a conspiracy pure, uh, theory surrounding the purchase of that piece of property. So with that, I encourage you and wish you the best as you make the decisions moving forward on this. And we'll live with the decisions that you make in the future. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Brown?
Just one quick question. Didn't that get purchased before you were ever executive?
No, the property, the property was purchased after that.
Oh.
The, the, if I, since you've asked, the question is, you know, a, as a, as a citizen, as a business owner, I purchased property in that area about two thousand and one, put many, many millions of dollars' worth of improvements on that property. And that property was purchased by Homeland Security at the end of two thousand and ten. The, the theory is, is that because I made so much on that property, is, is that I raised the value of everything up in the area. And consequently, the appraisals for the new property were, uh, were well beyond what they should have been. It's, uh, it's total nonsense. If, uh, hey, the way things are, the property out there and all property in Watkin County went up in value a lot over those years. And I make no apology for what I purchased it for, for the money that I put into it, for the money I made, uh, running my business off of that and for the people that I employed during, during those periods of time. And and that deal also was straight above boards. But, uh, anyway. Mr. Brown?
Um, just for, I think you may want to clarify, the property that you bought and sold?
Is different from the property that the county bought. But it is, uh, in the area.
So it's not, so it's not physically possible for you to have benefited from it, from the transaction, because the property that the county bought was not one that you'd ever owned?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Mr. Sadiq?
I still have that question, that the cost of hundred and ten million dollars for five hundred or four hundred fifty beds, this even go up. That is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per bed. And this was raised last time when we put it on the ballot also. That time, it was hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars a bed. I mean, you know, I, whatever thirty years I spend in construction and you have spent a lot of time, somehow I cannot justify why would, uh, a, you know, two hundred twenty thousand, without land, you can build a nice mansion without the cost of land.
Right.
Right? But that, that is something. And second thing, I, I think that we are, we are giving up so much money money to cities to come to agreement with us.
I agree with you.
You know, and that is, and 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 that should be very clear to public that you're paying only sixty cents on the dollar and forty cents you're doing. I think the people didn't understand. They think they're, it's a jail tax and they're paying for the jail. It's much more than that. And that kind of is, is bothers me personally that we are collecting three hundred fifty-five million dollars for a two-hundred-million-dollar jail.
Well, that gets into the art of compromise. Two years ago, when the measure went down, I believe that I heard from the council is, is that, you know, we needed to have all of the cities on board to be able to put this thing onto the ballot again. You know, we also have a need to operate the jail. And that's been one of the, the difficult parts of this whole thing. It, it's a complicated issue. It takes, uh, a lot of work to put one of these things together. But for us to provide for the alternatives to corrections within the facility that we want to provide for, and also providing for the mental health beds and the medical beds and all the core infrastructure that we need, it costs money to operate. And as you know, property tax doesn't allow, under the revised code of Washington, for us to use property tax for operations. And to be able to pull this off, uh, we not only need to build a jail, which is very expensive, but we need to operate it. And that's why the sales tax ends up being the preferred method.
Yeah, you, you know, I calculated, if you don't charge, no per diem charge to any city, and we keep the money, it's still a freebie to them, and you still do better.
That was not, that was not an acceptable option for Bellingham early on and hasn't been an option for the cities pretty much the whole way through. So if, if, you know, if we want to get into a position and you decide not to put it on the ballot and you want to take control and we, and we want to do something that's not going to be acceptable to the cities in the county, then, you know, then that path can be explored. But it has been explored and it was one that, it was an option that wasn't available to us.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you so much for the opportunity to come up and talk for just a couple minutes. As I said, I wish you all the best as you make your decisions over the next few weeks.
Okay, we'll move on to-
Okay, we'll move on to the open session. During the open session, members of the public will have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue relevant to county business. Before beginning, please state your name and topic of interest, and if it's complicated, please spell it. We will go ahead and open the open session.
I'm still Bob Burr from Bellingham. My comments will be short, but typically not so sweet. I voted for each of you because I felt that you would be good stewards of the environment and protectors of Lake Watcom or already polluted water supply. And I would definitely campaign against you if I determined otherwise. I was therefore chagrined to learn that the county was going along a path of granting a determination of non-significance to a very significant building project on the shores of the lake. To issue a DNS on this project is ludicrous. DNS determinations are meant for minor projects that do not need public comment. Please, please, do not continue on this path. My ask is simply this: Schedule a public hearing and allow the people of our county to participate in the full process and not the optional DNS.
Can I just ask Karen Frakes, our attorney here? I asked that same question. Why is it a DNS? And I'm not real clear on the answer. And I don't wanna say the wrong thing to get me in trouble so I can't vote at some point on it, but it's confusing to me. It's the Wildwood one. The place is, it's a huge subdivision increase. I thought you knew about it.
No, I, I mean, somebody in my office, Royce, who represents PDS, may know about it. I saw some emails that were directed to you, but I didn't spend time learning about the project, so...
Well, we were told we should be careful and not say anything because it could come to us in an appeal.
Oh, right. It's something, I think there's an application for a conditional use permit.
I don't know, but it's, they're giving it a DNS.
And it's the typical situation where technically, the appearance of fairness doctrine doesn't prohibit you from talking about it, but because you're the appellate, the next step of it, if it gets appealed, you don't wanna, you don't wanna harm your ability to be a fair decision-maker in the case. But I don't know anything about the specifics of it.
Well, I guess, let me ask it in a different way. Can the council, do we have any say on asking that the DNS be changed to EIS?
No, I believe that's an administrative, yeah.
Mike Kaufman. So I'm here, so I'll speak, and some other things. I had two stories. I was going to use one, but the sheriff left, so I'll go to the second one. I'm gonna speak to last session's public hearing that we worked on with the Comprehensive Plan. And in working on Chapter Five with the utility chapter and the committees that I was on with that, and Councilman Seth Paul, one of your last comments there was about learning what tools you have in the toolbox to work with these types of projects. And the tools that I learned to work with in that committee and with that chapter, one that we worked on was understanding the franchise agreement. Many people don't know what that is, but that we grant a franchise agreement for utilities to operate in our community. And it's just been kinda something that's happened in the past. We don't pay much attention to it. I understand that the city of Bellingham hired a law firm in their last franchise agreement with one of the phone companies, which is maybe one that we're still currently working on here with the county. And in the review last year, one of the Planning Commission members said, "Oh, franchise agreement, you know, kinda what's that? Does it really have teeth, or is it just something?" So we were rehashing that same thing, but franchise agreement, I think, is a big nail that the, that the people have to work with. The other thing that we worked with was to intervene back in the day. It was like, it, to me, it was inconceivable. That was like, duh, if you're going to have a chance to sit at the table at a major project, why would you not intervene? And yet, we had to debate it. Well, you know, the feds are involved, maybe that's not our, our thing to deal with, or we don't have enough money for the attorneys to deal with this thing. Intervene! It was something that was put in our, in that Chapter Five document. And the other thing that I'd like to speak to is eminent domain kinda lives, as I understand it, that I've worked with it in, in the utility chapter. And when we, the people, were running the, the petition to stop the coal trains and the Cherry Point thing, after that failed, one of the things I brought up to them, and I call it ED, it's my acronym for eminent domain.
Thirty seconds, please.
And I asked the Gene Melios at the, at the, who's the environmental attorney at the university, and I said, "If I stood up in, in front of the people and I said, 'We have the right to ask for eminent domain of the Cherry Point property for Gateway Pacific Terminal,'" she was like, "No, you can't do that, you know, the county never will." I says, "That's not what I'm asking." Do we have the right to ask to eminent domain, which is a county issue in this country, county by county? She says, "Yes, you do. You have to have a good reason, but you have the right to ask for eminent domain." And I think there's a heck of a lot of water out there, and I think there's a heck of a good reason to eminent domain that land at Cherry Point. And give it to the people, and give it to Lummi Nation, and make it work for us. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew Goggins, G O G G I N S, City of Bellingham. I'd like to address the council coincidentally about Cherry Point. And I'd like to bring to your attention the experience of a, a close friend of my family who works for a contractor for BP, not BP, but a subcontractor. And the subcontractor, just a week ago, laid off twice as many people as they usually lay off during the downswing because BP's coming back. And instead of telling them, "Expect to be called back in three months," they're being told, "Well, hopefully, we'll call you back in three months, but there's a good chance that we won't because BP's scaling back." And not only that, their business plans are up in the air, and they might be actually decamping from Watcom County and moving to another state eventually, you know, just winding down their operations. So, in a way, I'm almost reluctant to bring it to your attention, 'cause I think there might be one or two people on the county council who are happy to hear this. But you shouldn't, for obvious reasons, that if BP does leave Watcom County, it's not a good thing for the county. Thank you.
Joy Gilfill in Watcom County. I've heard in the last couple meetings, you guys talking about the EDI funds and the seven hundred thousand dollars that's being used for capital improvements, I believe. And then I was also listening to the idea that you're gonna potentially move money out of the general fund into a capital improvement fund to replace the EMS levy or something. The reason I'm speaking is because economic development is the number one problem I think we actually have beyond poverty. Poverty is the end result of mass incarceration and government employment that has skyrocketed, and a lot of other problems that are going on in our government systems. And we're gutting the middle class. Free enterprise is the last bastion of freedom in America. And being able to somehow redirect some of the economic development funds from whatever form that you get it, back into helping our, our middle-class people launch new businesses as opposed to incarcerating the poor. I think there's a lot of returns on investment that have not been considered. I think we haven't had enough of a visionary conversation about how do we actually build cooperative enterprises? How do we help the small, the poor, the solo entrepreneurs, the middle class to rebuild? Because large industries perhaps are not the way of building jobs for the future. So I'm just raising as, as something for us to consider. I don't necessarily have clear opinions about whether you should or should not move any of these funds. I'm just saying, let's consider looking at economic development a little bit differently. The world is changing. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us during the open session? Seeing no one, we'll close the open session, and we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, the Watcom County Finance and Administrative Services Committee met today. We considered four, sorry, let me just check, four items under the consent agenda. These all received unanimous approval, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion before us for these four items on our consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Donovan excused.
Mr. Chair, the next item is an ordinance amending, sorry, ordinance repealing and replacing Watcom County Code, Chapter 1.18, court fines and costs. This received unanimous approval, and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion before us. Any discussion? Would you please call the roll?
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Ken Mann.
Yes.
Sap Paul Sedu.
Yes.
Carl Weimer.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Mr. Donovan excused.
Mr. Chair, the next item is request authorization for the county executive to enter into a credit transaction agreement between Watcom County Flood Control Zone District and Lummi Nation Wetland and Habitat Mitigation Bank to secure wetland mitigation credits to fulfill requirements for the High Creek sediment management and fish passage improvement project in the amount of twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars. In this case, the council is acting as the Watcom County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. This received unanimous approval, and I so move.
Okay, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Donovan excused.
Mr. Chair, I'm not quite sure where you wanna put this in, but we had a discussion regarding the creating a Watcom County Business and Commerce Committee. This is, we moved this forward as a motion. I don't know, do you wanna address this now or later?
Missing out of my script.
It wasn't on the agenda for this evening.
Okay. So our vote was to move it forward to the full council for approval. We reached, we reached, the committee reached agreement on the wording. Do you wanna push it forward to the next session, or...
I think you were going to, if I remember correctly from this morning, you were going to kind of approve it in concept and then forward that onto the port.
Exactly. The preference was to have the full council's endorsement of it, to then forward it to the port of Bellingham, who's acting as our representative as the associate development organization.
Wouldn't this need to go to introduction first?
It's a resolution. It would come back, once it goes through the port and whoever, City of Bellingham, whoever else it's gonna go to, then it would come back to us and we'd prepare an ordinance.
Just approving it in concept and then getting that review.
Yeah. Feedback from there.
That's, that's good for me.
Okay. So I'd make that motion that we...
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Did you want us to speak?
No, I was just gonna say, it's not an ordinance yet, so we could just do it by a vote, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, just to push the concept forward, yeah. Any discussion? Mr. Weimer.
I stepped out during that. I was just wondering, was there any significant changes from what was in orange?
Uh, I didn't think there was any changes.
No, there was something.
No, there was no change. It was just the fact that we're gonna send it over to the port.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So we're not setting this committee up this evening. We're just sending it off to others to discuss. One thing I did note on it is, there was nowhere in this thing about who's gonna staff this new committee. And usually, often in these committees, we say, "Tyler Schroeder will be there at every meeting," or something.
Works for me.
I guess Jack wants it.
Actually, Jack wants it.
No, this is a council committee. Right, so, so I don't know if, since it was Sap Paul's idea, he's gonna be the secretary and staff this venture?
I don't mind. I, if you guys wanna make me do that, I'll do it.
It's not gonna be for us.
But that may be just something to consider before it comes back to us, that these things take time and effort.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And there wasn't any time and effort assigned to it.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, there's nothing else from finance at the moment.
Okay, next on my list is the Planning and Development Committee.
Yes, we had in front of us today approval of the draft public participation plan for the Watcom County Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulation Amendments. This is just updating the plan that we passed last fall to take off ones that we've already dealt with and add new ones. And that comes forward from the Planning and Development Committee with a recommendation to approve two to one. I so move.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
That passes five to one with Ms. Brenner opposed and Mr. Donovan excused. Okay, we have another item that had no committee assignment. It's a resolution accepting a petition to create the Lummi Island Park and Recreation District and set a date for public hearing on the proposal.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Question for the clerk, would you just set that date, or do you want any input from the council?
I believe it's in the resolution.
Yeah.
July twenty-eighth, twenty-seventh?
So it's already on your radar?
Yeah. Correct. Oh, it's July, July eleventh.
Okay, so, seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Donovan excused. Next up is council appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. We have an appointment to the Noxious Weed Control Board, District Four. The applicant is Alexander Von Drell. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Donovan excused. Next is executive appointments to boards, commissions, and committees requesting confirmation of the county executive's appointments to the Watcom County Defense Advisory Committee.
I'll move confirmation.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Discussion?
Just, I'm really, this is gonna be great. I'm glad they're gonna do this. Because the, I'm, I'm been on that committee, and we haven't been meeting in a long, long time.
Okay, so, seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Donovan excused. Next up is introduction items. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I'd move to introduce.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sick of this.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to remove item number one for a separate vote.
Okay. So this motion is for items two through six for introduction? Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Donovan excused. So back to item number one. Do we have a motion for that item? Ms. Brenner.
I'm wanting to make sure we can do this. I move to hold till after we've had that Vera presentation.
Second.
I mean, that'll still, we still, we won't have time to put it on?
Sorry. You can still introduce it tonight, we just wouldn't have it on the agenda for four weeks.
Okay, never mind, I take that back. I move to introduce. It won't, we won't vote on it till after the Vera presentation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to introduce item one. Discussion? Mr. Mann?
So I, I'm gonna speak against it. I think, obviously, I don't support it anyway, but I also think we've, we've, we've got this impression out here that we're making decisions and then asking for the public's input. And, you know, they... And, you know, the hearing tonight, after we've already voted to approve the joint use agreement, now we're, we're talking about already voting to introduce it before we've even heard from our consultant, which we all think is a good thing to do. I, I agree the timing, you know, you guys, if you guys want to put this on the ballot, it needs to happen at our four weeks from now, but let's just wait to introduce it at least until two weeks from now and not just send this, send, continue sending the message that we're sort of hell-bent on doing this without waiting for, for input from the public or from our consultants.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I kind of resent this hell-bent crap that you just said. I mean, it has nothing to do with that. We just saw, I thought a nod at the head from our clerk that we wouldn't have time to, to do it and then vote on it after that if, if we didn't do it, if we didn't put it on for tonight. I don't.
You could introduce it in two weeks. It's just that we, you would have to act on it at that meeting on the 11th.
Okay, so that would still be after we heard from, okay, then I withdraw my second or whatever I did. Go ahead and wait. I don't care.
You didn't second.
I didn't.
You made the motion.
Well, then I, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, so there's no motion on the table. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'd also speak against introducing it because in addition to, I think, the obligation to hear from the Vera Institute, we also have not had any feedback from the city of Bellingham.
Well, you don't have to speak against it. It's already withdrawn.
No, no, but I, but, okay, well, that's, that's the way I choose to phrase it.
Okay, no, I just thought.
So hearing this, hearing this line of discussion, I would, I would entertain a motion to hold
Okay.
for two weeks.
I might get a motion to hold.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to hold for two weeks. Mr. Sidhu?
I think what I'm looking at is, is that when there was a year this thing and the discussion between the county administration and the mayors and everything, I don't know how come when it came to us, it's suddenly crunch of time. We, like, this is such an important and huge thing and we get, like, get introduced week, two weeks. I was actually, I, I just want to say, I was felt pressured last time when we put the JLU's agreement approval because, oh, there's no time. They got to go on to the ballot. This could have been brought up in, in March. Or they could have started their negotiations last year. I think, I, I, I think that, that is too little time for us to decide. Because what happens, the public perception is the county council put this thing on the ballot. Of course, we are doing it. But, but there is no, nothing, we had no say as the JLU's agreement was built, that we had any input into that. We had just given one choice, yes or no. And, and public perception is that we are the ones who are asking them to give out $355 million for a $200 million project. So I, I don't feel comfortable with that. That, that such time constraint is on us now, that if we don't act in time, then this won't go on ballot.
Okay, so the motion is to hold this for two weeks, to consider it again in two weeks? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Donovan excused. Uh, shoot, let's see, special committee of the whole, we had a meeting this morning and we talked about the critical areas ordinance again. We looked at Article Five, Article Eight, and just started into Article Eight and we still have the article, the remainder of Article Eight to go and Article Nine. Anything else from finance?
Uh, we had a discussion regarding the capital, capital facilities fund regarding the reallocation of funds made surplus due to the passage of the EMS levy. It was a request to set up a capital facilities fund and we decided to defer this for the moment.
Keep back and tell us more about that, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, continue.
I've got photos of my last trip to Hawaii. What about that?
I think you went to get our committee of the whole motion.
Yeah. We thought you knew something that the rest of us didn't.
No, 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 there's no, there's no emergencies or anything. So we also had a committee of the whole meeting in executive session and I would offer up this motion. I would move to authorize the county executive acting on behalf of the Watkins County Flood Control District Board of Supervisors to execute an option agreement for the property discussed in executive session.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I'll move approval.
I already moved it.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, do we, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Donovan excused. Ms. Brenner, Public Works?
Well, yeah, I, I'll, we had a wonderful presentation by Dave Reynolds in Public Works and he's going to be sending us some more of the information. Let's see, let me get back to where I am. Oh, Public Works. Yeah, it was the annual report on Watkins County Juvenile Court, which is doing amazingly well. And they've really been finding a lot, you know, I think part of it is our, our court, the, the teen court, the mental health court, the drug court are really helping with diverting a lot of the problems. And they're working. I mean, I was real impressed with his presentation, but he went into more detail than what he even had in his presentation. He said he's going to send that over to us. But I wanted to just put one other thing on the record before, I, I should have done it when we voted on this. It was about ordinance repealing, replacing Watkins County Code 1.8, and I, especially tonight, it would have been a good thing to mention, but most people were gone by then. This is a really interesting replacement thing. It's to help people who are in the system, who don't have the money to be able to pay bail and to allow them other options besides, besides being incarcerated and waiting. And it's, I think it's very clever and, and, you know, and a unique way to be doing this. Where, and it's also, if they do the work release thing, they're going to get paid a whole lot more than they were because the prevailing wage, since they last did that, which was what, so many years ago, the prevailing wage has, has raised and so they're going to, their wage will be raised too. But I think it's just wonderful and it says, okay, the Watkins County Code section sent the, set the value of the day's labor at $60. That value has increased significantly since 1991. And we're, so whereas, I forget where it is, but it's, it's increasing their wage so they would be able to pay off their bail a lot, a lot easier and be able to do something constructive. And here it is. It's got the, the amount and the, yeah. It, it's a lot more than what it was. Here it is. For the year 2017, the average now is $1,270 per hour or $102 per day worked. This wage will be reset at the beginning of each calendar year to reflect the current year's average. I, I think that's a wonderful way to help people avoid sitting around in jail pre-trial. I think it's great.
Just for clarity, it's to pay off fines, not to pay off bail.
What?
Pay off fines.
It's pay, pay off the fines, not to pay off the bail.
Not bail.
Oh, okay. Well, to pay off their fines, which would still, if they don't pay them, they can still go to jail for that. But, but there was something about bail too. Hold on. That's the work crew. Okay, it was in some other part. But, but anyway, it's a start and, and what we're doing is giving people other options besides having to be in jail, which doesn't benefit anybody.
Okay, thank you. Back to planning.
Yeah, we had two other things in planning. One of them was a discussion of a proposal we just got from the Planning Commission regarding changes to Title 20 zoning for cumulative impervious surface coverage in the rural zones. And we just introduced that this evening, so there'll be a hearing on that coming up. And the second one was a discussion about how to move forward with the prosecutor for implementing the study that was called for in the new comp plan and stuff. We just passed policy 2 C C 16. And out of the committee, I'll make a motion to ask the prosecutor to move forward as soon as possible with a contract necessary for the implementation of the study called for in new comp plan, policy 2 C C dash 16. And that comes forward with, from the committee, I think it was a two to one recommendation.
Okay, we, we have that motion before us. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes five to one with Ms. Brenner opposed and Mr. Donovan excused.
And I, I might just say that that's totally within kind of the prosecutor's discretion. You know, worked through a process and came up with the name of this Cascadia law firm. And I'm assuming that he's done this lots of times and they normally kind of troll this out in chunks instead of all, the whole amount at once, but that's up to the prosecutor how he wants to structure that.
Okay. Any other items of business? Seeing none, we'll move to council member updates.
Nothing. Nothing? Nothing.
Nothing?
I went on the timber tour last week. For me to get up that early to do anything, it has to be really important. And I go on this timber tour every year and I'm just amazed because every year it's different. And this time, I got my first view of artificial intelligence. And it was this equipment they're using that is replacing, it's kind of sad, it's replacing fallers, but that's one of the most dangerous jobs. It's, it's, it's the same machine and the guy hangs in the machine because it's so steep. It was a 70% slope and he would, they'd already done a 90% slope with this machine. And there's one guy who operates it and it, it cuts the, the log, the, cuts the trees and then it, it stacks them and it's just, I've never seen anything like it. I got to get, I, I want to get the pamphlet that was passed around. They didn't have extras, so I couldn't keep it. But it's an amazing machine.
Did you take any pictures?
No, but Sharon Westergreen did and she's going to send them to me. I don't, you know, I'm low-tech, you know me.
Low-tech.
But she did it. It's amazing. And I wish you guys would go on, you know, timber tours and, and to be better, to better understand how amazing the, the logging, the forestry community is doing and how, how many improvements they've made. It's just amazing.
Nothing? Okay, with no other business before the council, we are adjourned.